Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Ken Marshburn, Mayor. I've called this meeting of the Town Council of Garner. First meeting in February to order. Thank you all for attending this evening. As is usual, our custom, we thank you for adhering to our mask policy. And I will say to those of you who come up to speak to one of our podiums, when you get to the podium, if you want to, you can lower your mask or take your mask off while you're speaking. Also, I know we have limited seating. Hopefully, we have room for everyone. There is an overflow area upstairs, I guess, but I think we have room for everybody, so we'll do our best to accommodate you. Okay, as we usually do, we're going to start our meeting with a pledge of allegiance, and we'll ask you to stand if you can. Going to recognize Mayor Pro Tem Elmo Vance, who will lead us in our pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, you may be seated. I'm going to recognize Councilmember Vance, again, who has arranged for one of our local ministers to give our invocation this evening, so Mr. Vance, if you'll introduce him, that'll be fine.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have the pleasure of introducing to some Reverend Dr. Jeffrey Scholler. He's the lead pastor of Aversboro Road Baptist Church. Reverend Scholler.
Welcome, sir. We're glad to have you. Good to see you again.
Mr. Mayor, greetings on behalf of Aversboro Road Baptist Church. We are celebrating our 51st anniversary of serving the Lord in the town of Garner, and we look forward to many more years of partnering with the town in community events. You may have most recently been at Aversboro for our Veterans Day service, as we hosted the town's Veterans Day service, and we appreciate partnering with you. Thank you for the opportunity to come and pray for this council and to pray for our town. Will you bow with me, and let's go to the Lord in prayer? Heavenly Father, we pause now and bow in your presence, for you are worthy of our acknowledgement and our praise. There is none like you; your compassion and thy faithfulness fails us not. God, would you be present with us this evening? Lord, I ask that you bless our mayor and these council members with your wisdom to make decisions that will care for your people in the town of Garner. Father, in the past, when you have spoken, miracles manifested; healing happened, and the world was changed. God, you spoke, and that which was dark, formless, and void was transformed into a beautiful creation. There is power in your words, so speak to this council. Breathe upon them and empower them to impact Garner with your strength, compassion, love, and grace. Heavenly Father, you promised in your word that if your people would repent and turn from our sinful ways, you would heal our land. O King of kings and Lord of lords, see us as an assembly of repentant hearts and minds tonight, filled with intentions and commitments of turning from our sinful ways. Speak tonight that healing might take place to our land through the efforts of this council. And now may the grace and peace of our Lord Jesus rest upon each one within the sound of my voice, and the power of the Holy Spirit keep your hearts and minds in unity and in love, and may the Lord bless your time together. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Sleep for Veterans Day, for sure. We appreciate the partnership a whole bunch. As I sometimes do, I get ahead of myself a little bit on our agenda. I failed to recognize our town clerk and ask her to call the role for the meeting tonight. Would you do that this time, Madam Clerk?
Mayor Marshburn?
I'm present.
Mayor Pro Tem Vance?
Present.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Singleton?
Here.
And Councilmember Behringer?
Here.
Okay, thank you so much, and thank you, councilmembers, for showing up on a cold rainy night out there. So, we have a lot of business to conduct tonight, so we'll get right to it. The first item of business is something we always do at the beginning. That's something we call petitions and comments. This is the period of our meeting when we receive comments from the public on items not included on the agenda. Citizens should sign up with the town clerk to speak prior to the start of the meeting. The board is interested in hearing your concerns, but we may not take actions or deliberate on subject matters brought up during the petitions and comments segment. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate town officials or staff and may be scheduled for a future agenda. And I would make a comment that on occasions, and tonight may be one of those, we have a number of people who come to offer petitions, and they're all here for the same general concern, okay? I see a few of those here. So what we usually do is, we don't necessarily have time to have everybody speak. We'll ask you to keep your comments to about three to five minutes, and if you, as a group, have already designated, or we would encourage you to designate someone who is going to speak and basically speak for the group, we would prefer that you do that, but we'll get as many of you as we can. So, we would ask you to limit your comments to three to five minutes, and I try not to be rude and interrupt people, but I will call time if we get excessive. And again, if you have persons already prepared to speak, that's great. So, at this time, Madam Clerk, do you have a list of names of persons? And we will start with, I guess, the first name on the list, and we'll just take it from there, and... Or does the group have a designated speaker that you'd like to present to us at this time?
Johnson.
Okay, thank you. If you will, when you come to the podium, just state your name and your address for the record. We need to have that, if you will.
I'm Donna Johnson, 9304 Haymetto Court, Raleigh, 27603.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm here on behalf of Rex Wellness Center members, employees, and the wider community. First, thanks to those of you who have reached out to UNC Rex administration to discuss the issue of closing the Garner location. I realize it's a business decision, and we can only move forward. I simply want to deliver to you the petitions with more than 1,200 signatures so far of our community, and a collection of their stories and comments to give a voice to those affected by this decision. To highlight a few, a member with MS works to maintain her strength and independence; others who deal with fibromyalgia, rheumatoid arthritis, and other challenging health conditions; some have asthma and benefit from exercise in a moist environment. Exercise is a critical factor for many in recovery from various surgeries. This is a place to heal and to become strong and make friends. For many, including seniors, this place offers social connections that contribute to and support good mental health. Not only a wellness center, but a welcome center for those new to the area. There are many accounts of fantastic weight loss, improved health and fitness. In addition to seniors and adults, children have the opportunity to learn to swim and to practice year-round, and many have. In short, there's a benefit for every age and ability. The quality of life is improved for many because of this well-loved resource, especially during these times of so many challenges. We look forward to the town of Garner exploring options in the future to provide this type of unique facility through partnerships, incentives, fundraising, whatever it takes to bring this kind of valuable resource to the growing population of Garner, Southern Wake County, and the greater area. We truly do appreciate the opportunity to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Johnson, and I believe you and I exchanged some emails in regards to this very issue, so I thank you.
Your time, Ms. Marsh.
Okay, yes, okay, all right, well-stated. Who is next, who would like to speak at this time? Is there another person that was... Yeah, okay, if you would, come to the podium.
My name is Garland Martin Christensen, and I live at 5409 Holland Farms Way in Raleigh, 27603. It's right on the border of Garner, right next to the Garner Fire Station, actually.
Can we claim you there?
I wish, but you might be able to. My name is Garland Martin Christensen, and I've been a member of the Garner-Rex Wellness Center for the past two years, during which I have lost over 100 pounds by attending the classes and programs held within. This facility is extremely important to so many in our community for a myriad of reasons, such as providing physical therapy, helping others achieve and maintain their physical fitness goals, and supporting mental health as well as emotional well-being through exercise and socialization, but most of all, for enhancing quality of life. This is no mere gym facility. It is a caring, encouraging, loving, and uplifting community of local citizens, a large, multi-generational family from every walk of life. I am proud to say that I've met my closest friends at the Garner-Rex Wellness Center, people who have encouraged me to be the best and happiest version of myself that I can possibly be. I am here speaking on behalf of all of us, asking that you please intervene and help us keep this facility operating, a facility that has so greatly impacted all of our lives for the better. Please know that there are many elderly members who have voiced that they would be shut-ins if not for this facility, which is so close to their homes, and there is no other option for using an indoor, temperature-controlled, year-round pool facility anywhere within Garner. And traveling to Raleigh, Cary, Clayton, or Knightdale for their indoor pool facilities is just too far for most to be able to regularly commute, which will sentence them to a future of inactivity and isolation. During a time in our country where many citizens struggle with depression and anxiety, solitude and confinement, we at the Garner-Rex Wellness Center have found a solution, a rescuing oasis which gives us strength and helps us overcome, serving so many different needs. I ask that you please consider all of the many citizens that the closing of this facility will greatly impact, having nowhere else to go to fill all of our needs. Please hear our outcry, our need for your help in keeping this facility open, which will vastly benefit all of your citizens, but most importantly, the senior citizens of the community. I thank you for your time and the honor to speak here tonight.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your making your comments clear and concise, sure enough, okay? Is there anyone else who cares to speak at this time on this issue? What I'll do is, if you will, if you're here primarily for that purpose, if you'll just raise your hand so we get a feel for... Okay, all right, all right. There you go, prompting, yeah. Thank you, thank you, okay.
Is he here on his own will?
He may have come here under some duress, I'm not sure, but no. I'm not going to give any loud and long response. I have corresponded with a couple of you. I share your concern. I was a member of Rex Wellness some years ago, and at some point, not because it was not a good place, I dropped my membership and did some other things in regards to recreation. But I understand that for many of you, and that's true with a good neighbor of mine where I live, the pool facility is one that is very meaningful to many people in terms of their exercise. And you're exactly right, we do not have another facility like that in the town of I think most of you can understand that, as I understand, the position of Rex and the person that I spoke to, I've forgotten the name of the person, but I made notes, indicated there was a financial decision that had to be made, that was made. I think they gave some notice on this, so it's not like they sprung this on folks quickly. I'm willing to, and working with our council, who votes on matters, to look at other options we might explore. I got the impression that Rex has made this decision, and that it was irrevocable at this point in time, as you have heard as well. I cannot sit here and say that, you know, I have a suggestion for an alternative, but I'm willing to look further and to work with maybe a group of you or whoever to see what options we might explore. I just don't think, unless Rex changes its current course, that we can expect that that facility is going to remain open. However, I will, at this time, give councilmembers an opportunity if they want to address this issue briefly, and we will take it back to staff and look at it again further even after this meeting. So, council, anybody here want to offer up any particular comments at this time? I'll have you do that. Okay, Mr. Dellinger.
You know, I heard it was shutting down a little while ago. I don't go there, but I appreciate all of you who do and have come together to let us know how important it is to your community is to this community, and this community is to that community. I will, of my own accord, work with the mayor to reach out to Rex and get Rex and get an answer as to exactly why. Maybe they don't understand exactly what they're doing to the community and what they're taking away, and I'd like to know what their rationale was beyond the dollar figures. It will leave a hole. The facility is unique. I know some people who use it, so it will be a hole, so I will work with whoever wants to get some answers. Even if nothing changes, we'll try to get some more answers.
Okay, thanks, sir. I appreciate that. Mr. Matthews?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, are the petitions that you've got signed, are they going to be turned in to us, or are you going another way with those?
Yes, I have given them to Ms. Christensen.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you. Okay, all right. Anyone else? Okay. So... So, there may be others of you here who are here, who are here to comment on another issue, so I don't want to ignore those folks as well, but again, I would say to the group that is here, if you feel like you've had your ample opportunity, if you want to leave now, and we'll have a little more room to bring in some other folks, but if there are those of you who were, who were coming here this evening for other comments, are there any at this time? I'll be happy to recognize you as well. Okay, not seeing any. Thank you, thank you all, we appreciate your interest in your local government, and certainly in this facility. Those are ingenious signs that you have with you as well.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add to my comments, if there is a possibility for the Town of Garner to somehow provide a facility that could help the citizens in the future, maybe adding on to the community center and building an indoor pool facility similar to Rex, it would greatly benefit all of the citizens. I know it would take a really long time in passing and discussions for this to happen, but there's such a great need in the community, as obviously shown by the petition, all the people that are here, it would greatly benefit the citizens if there was some way that this could be accomplished.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I meant to say before you left, I commend anybody who gets on a health program and then really changes, I believe you're the one, you lost quite a bit of weight.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Very commendable, so.
Thank you.
Keep, keep, keep that up, that's a good thing.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you all.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, good night to you all. Okay, as they are departing, we can, we'll move to the next item, and that is the adoption of our agenda, so council members, you have that before you, and you've seen that, we do have a closed session at the end, as you know. Unless anybody has a suggested change, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved?
Okay, moved and properly seconded. If there are no further comments, I'll ask you to, if you approve adoption, would you vote aye?
Aye.
If there's any opposition, no, and there is none. Okay, next item of business comes under the heading of Presentations. I believe we do have one very special presentation this evening, and I will recognize our town manager for that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce my newest assistant town manager, Jody Miller. She comes to us from Durham County, and she has a wealth of experience there. She also worked in local government in Virginia, in Williamsburg, and we look really forward to having her here. She's got a wealth of experience in a lot of different areas that we're going to be venturing into over the next few years, and her 20 years of experience is going to help us achieve some of our goals, so.
Okay, thank you very much. I understand in her first few days here, you took her off on a conference, so she's come back well-trained and well-informed, I'm sure, so. We'd be happy to hear from you, Ms. Miller, at this time, if you want to, and then I'll have her counsel to make any comments if they care to. Welcome, we're very pleased to have you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, members of council, thank you for the warm welcome. I'm on day four of being an employee of the town, and it's been just wonderful so far. I'm delighted to be part of the Garner team and the part of the Garner family, as I hear so much about, and I look forward to working with you to achieve the town's goals, and working with our manager and his team as we move the town forward, so thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you, it's a pleasure to have you here. I'll start on my left, Phil, if you just want to say how do you can.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I had the opportunity to chat a few minutes when we had our earlier break, and again, welcome aboard, we've got, we've got a lot going on, and I'm sure you're going to fit right in, and glad to have you part of the team, so welcome.
I say the same, we've got a lot of irons in the fire, maybe too many irons in the fire, but we've got a lot happening, and you've had to deal with a lot of issues over in Durham that we're dealing with some of the same issues, so, welcome to Garner, welcome to the team.
Okay, Ms. Perringer?
It's pretty needless to say, I was thrilled when I saw your resume, so thank you for coming, moving to Garner, well, moving to the Garner community as far as working for us, and we look forward to working with you and learning from you as we move forward.
Here, Dellinger?
Welcome aboard.
Okay, and Mr. Vance?
Yes, welcome, Ms. Miller, and it was an honor to talk to you briefly about several projects in Durham, and look forward to talking with you more, and wish you the best as you move forward here in Garner.
Okay, anything else, Mr. Manager? Okay?
That's it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. And now we come to another actual presentation, and I'm not sure if I got this to Mr. Dellinger in advance, do you have the proclamation there, or no? Okay, all right, all right, so.
I have a copy.
Yeah, okay, you have it there, and I have one here, well, I have it in my, so, tonight, we want to have a proclamation read in honor and recognition of Black History Month. It occurs during the month of February on a regular basis, and we, as a council, always seek to acknowledge and recognize that. What I'd like to do tonight is have Councilmember Dellinger, who serves on our Juneteenth Committee, along with our town manager with this committee we appointed last year, and they have been active in some variety of activities, and/or certainly educating our citizens regarding what Juneteenth stands for, we won't go into that tonight, but I've asked Mr. Dellinger if maybe he would read the proclamation, and he can, in essence, symbolically or otherwise, hand it off to the town manager, and the signed one will have on file in our office, if you would, please, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas February has been designated as Black History Month, in which we pause to reflect on the vast contributions of African-Americans, and whereas this month gives us an opportunity to become more knowledgeable about black heritage and to honor the many black leaders, scholars, entrepreneurs, workers, and citizens who've contributed to the progress of our nation, and whereas such knowledge can strengthen the insight of all our citizens regarding the issues of human rights, the great strides that have been made in the crusade to eliminate the barriers of equality for minority groups, and the continuing struggle against racial discrimination and poverty, and whereas we join with all Americans in celebrating our diverse heritage and culture, and continuing our efforts to protect democracy for all people, and recognize the vital achievements of all African-Americans, as well as our local African-American residents. Now therefore, can Marshburn, the mayor, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2022 as Black History Month in the Town of Garner, and encourage all residents to join him in honoring the many contributions made by African-Americans throughout this region, and participate in educational events honoring the contributions of black Americans?
Thank you so much, sir, and that will, Mr. Dickerson will receive that on behalf of the council. I would just comment that, over the years that I've served on the council now as mayor, we have, on occasions, had celebrations down at the senior center, we weren't able to do that this year, so, and then we had also planned something potentially over at the GPAC, but those plans were changed as well, so, I'm pleased that we could do it here this evening, and my compliments to all who have been involved in this in the past, and those of you who are involved now, and the mayor is certainly, would lend his support to all those efforts as well. Okay, unless there are any other presentations that you know of, Mr. Manager, I'm not aware of any. We will now come to the consent agenda, there are several items on the consent agenda, you have those before you, unless anybody needs to pull one of those items, I'm going to ask for a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
I move.
Socket.
Okay, thank you, Ms. England, Mr. Matthews, for that. Hearing no other questions, if you vote, excuse me, if you favor approving consent agenda, would you please vote yes or aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and there is no opposition, so we have the consent agenda approved, thank you very much. Okay, we have under item H2, public hearings this evening, and so, as I call the first one, special use permit with site plan, SUP SP 2108, I believe Mr. Trezenberg is going to be our presenter this evening. I should mention, for the sake of us all, that this is a quasi-judicial hearing, and so all persons wishing to provide testimony must be sworn in prior to giving testimony, and so I would say to you, as I'm just going through this, if you're planning to give testimony in this hearing, would you go back to the town clerk's area back there where she will swear you in? Under state law, the parties are entitled to a fair hearing, and so I must ask our council members, do any of you have a fixed opinion prior to the hearing that is not subject to change, or have you had any ex parte communications, have you had any close familial business or other association or relationship with affected persons, or have a financial interest in the outcome? If so, you should acknowledge it at this time. Okay, thank you. So this is a fact-finding hearing, and only competent material and substantial evidence that is not repetitive is allowed. Only expert witnesses based on training and experience may testify as to impacts on property values, traffic safety, or noise levels. Council members are only allowed to receive factual information during this hearing, and are not allowed to discuss the case outside of this hearing. So with that explanation in place, I'm going to formally open the hearing, and we will call on Mr. Trezenberg, who will make the opening presentation. Good evening, sir, good to see you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. All right, tonight, we have two special uses for you, the first one is 601 Tryon Apartments, case number SUP SP 2108. You will recall this one came through for rezoning request as well, at that time, it was just generically called 601 Tryon Multi-Family. Just to review, much of the same information, the applicant is Zimmer Development Company, LLC, the owner's Broomfield LLC, of course, the location is at 601 Tryon Road, and the tract size is a little shy of 27 and 1/2 acres. The proposed use is multifamily, triplex and higher, including apartments, and the current zoning with that recent rezoning is now MF2 conditional, C252. Just to orient yourselves again, here is the site, we have the realigned Tryon Road coming in here, the old Tryon Road alignment here, which is now the Arts Drive on the west side of Junction Boulevard, and Broomfield Hunter Lane on the east side of Junction Boulevard. Their neighborhood meeting, all together in one, was back on October 14th, again at the Heather Hills Club. There were just 18 property owners within the notification area, this is largely a commercial and industrial area, along with some residential to the north, particularly in Raleigh. And again, here is the site plan, nothing has changed since you saw it as part of the rezoning package, just note here again that the median on Broomfield Hunter Lane will be installed up to the first entrance. The area shaded in blue represents the future Grinnell Street alignment, once it would be carried through from Tryon to Garner Station Boulevard. And this is the, for those who may be looking at this for the first time, this is the north side of the property, and this is the south side, match line in green. Here are the building elevations, to be, consist of cement fiberboard siding, more frequently known by Hardy Plank, is one of the primary manufacturers of it, they are proposing to use a combination of lap siding, board and batten and paneling, also with stone veneer. Terms of open space, they have met their minimum, as well as exceeded the 10% threshold of 2.74 acres. Within that, in addition to all the conservation areas within the Neuse River buffers and the wetlands, we do have some conditions from the zoning approval that are carried forward that relate to that, so they will also be providing their pool deck, dog park, playground, and pool cabana there at the specified minimums. There is no FEMA floodplains on the site, once again, but there are those riparian buffers and significant wetlands in the northern central part of the site, right in here. Contribute to the open space area. In terms of landscaping, their tree canopy cover requirement has more than been met with a minimum just on the preservation side of 22.6%. They will be also adding to the canopy requirements with their new overstory trees as part of their landscaping plan. The perimeter buffers are 15 feet along both the eastern and southern boundary lines, and they will be meeting those with both existing vegetation and supplementing where needed, that will be determined in the field. In terms of street buffers, Broomfield Hunter is a 20-foot width that will have street trees within it every 40 feet, and the street buffer along Grinnell is 15 feet with those same street trees every 40. Terms of parking overall, and I do have a handout that I will leave with you afterwards, because I do know that you have, we've had considerable discussion about this, and I wanted to put something together for you that tried to get at more of an apples-to-apples comparison, because as I dug into it, I found that we've not consistently counted what our requirements should be, according to the parking table, going back to 2000. As we do it today, we count up the bedroom requirement, plus the guest requirement, plus any of those amenities. In the past, back preceding my time here, the clubhouse and pool amenities were not counted. When you would see a parking minimum brought to you, it was really just the bedroom and the guest count. So when we go back and we look historically at how the parking is faring in terms of what's been required and what's been provided, we're not always talking from the same start point. But for this request, if we add up our current way that we do things, we come up with 747, they are proposing 648. That is 13.3% below that 747, they have provided a parking study that was put on the SharePoint site for y'all, and they do have their traffic engineer here tonight to testify to that as well. If we do look just at bedrooms and guests, then it's actually 7.8% below that requirement, which would have been 706. And you may say, how does that all relate? So this is the sheet that I'll, slide that I'll leave you with as well, and I apologize, this is something that just kind of came together late as I was waiting for a couple of these to get back to me, but I wanted to go back all the way to 2000 and see how we were doing. So I called into each apartment complex, talked to their living onsite managers, and like I said, what I discovered was, is that we have not historically always given this number, the required number has not been the same. For instance, I think it was Aberley and Adeline, it was just the bedrooms plus guest parking. Deer Harbor was actually just bedrooms and then a separate handicap requirement with no guests or amenity. That was interesting, I had not seen that before. And then mostly, for these, McCullers and Timber Creek were calculated the way we do it now. Solair was just done with guest and bedroom parking, because there, I think the only thing that I can figure out is that their amenity is integrated with their main building, so for whatever reason, that was not taken into account then. But if we're going to compare apples to apples, just to kind of see where this request falls in relation to previous requests, I've counted just the bedroom requirement and the guest requirement, and adjusted everybody to what those either were or would be. And so what we see here is then we have anywhere from Aberley-Solair actually providing a couple of extra spaces, to Timber Creek being 14.9% under, Deer Harbor was 10.3% under, and McCullers 8.2, so, a pretty good range there, between 0 and 14. So, a pretty good range there between 0 and 15%. This project overall is going to come in, again, at 7.8% if we're not factoring in that amenity parking. Talking to the managers, everybody said that, you know, nobody was 100% full, Aberley was closest. They felt that there were some evenings where it was slim pickings for parking, but nonetheless, they haven't been overwhelmed with complaints, or at least they did not volunteer that to me. I tried to phrase it in as unthreatening way as possible to try to get an honest answer. And most of the folks either said, yeah, we do get some, but everybody said that it was specifically related to particular locations within the complex. So, a building or two or three might be a little pinched for parking, other places more plentiful, as people would determine how far they felt comfortable in their preference for walking from their parking space to their apartment. Deer Harbor kind of surprised me, given that their reduction was as much as it was. They're only about 75% full overnight, and absolutely, she said absolutely no complaints. Solair, I apologize. The most recent one that has opened, they are already 98% occupied. So, she said they are now considered a stable apartment complex. This is the one, the newest one on Timber Drive East. Again, about 80 to 90% full, and so far, no complaints. She really, she said, really, we have just enough. As far as parking programs, again, kind of another indicator of just how many complaints there might be, only Adeline has actually instituted a parking program, but it is just for visitors. If you go into that complex, the manager noted that in the back, there's a loop on the north end, and she said that parking is kind of tight in that particular area. So, they have marked visitor spaces, and so, visitors are not allowed to park in the non-visitors, but they have not assigned spaces on a per-unit basis. Again, just want to provide that as some additional background information. Lighting has been shown in conformance with the UDO requirements, as well as meeting our staff recommendations for those LED fixtures that we know everybody is using these days. In terms of infrastructure, the stormwater management, the site is subject to both those water quality and quantity requirements. They are proposing an underground detention system with a, what they call a context storm filter, a dry detention pond, and a sand filter to satisfy those water quality and quantity requirements. But they will also still have to pay a nitrogen offset payment, and so, that will be secured before building permits are allowed to be released. Again, with the infrastructure, the water lines, we do have the existing 8-inch water line on Broomfield-Hunter that will be extended and carried through the site. We have a couple of different places where they can tie into sewer, including this 8-inch line along that future Grinnell Street extension area. In terms of roads and access, what we haven't really covered already, they will be constructing half of the future Grinnell Street. That will be constructed in accordance with those adopted local and regional transportation plans, and we would be accepting some fee and lieu for those parts where that blue-shaded area diverted from what they can actually build today. Side access drives, there will be one off of Broomfield-Hunter, two from Grinnell, and sidewalks will be installed along the frontages per the UDO requirements with four connections from those sidewalks into the internal network. Having reviewed all that, the inspections department, together with the fire department, has reviewed and given their preliminary approval. And the final TRC determination of UDO conformity, after sufficient review, staff, the TRC finds that this project is now proposed, may be considered consistent with the UDO so long as the following project-specific conditions are met. Prior to issuance of building permit, planning department does need to be in receipt of a voluntary contiguous annexation petition. Driveway permits need to be secured from NCDOT. Construction drawings must be submitted and reviewed by Garner Engineering, as well as construction drawings for City of Raleigh for the water and sewer extensions. Fee and lieu for those specified required roadway improvements and water lines shall be paid to the town and the city respectively. Dedication of utility easement and/or right-of-way dedication shall be recorded by plat with the Wake County Register of Deeds. That's for the Grinnell Street extension. Payment of engineering inspection fees shall be paid to the town, public utility fees paid to the City of Raleigh, and Garner Engineering shall be in receipt of documentation that that nitrogen offset payment has been made. Prior to issuance of the certificate of occupancy, the stormwater control measures, maintenance plan, and associated memorandum of agreement shall be approved and recorded. And prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy for the 76th dwelling unit, Broomfield-Hunter Lane improvement shall be completed. That is the conclusion of our prepared testimony. We do have your motion worksheets beginning on page 103 to approve or deny, and the applicant is here with their attorney and their experts to testify on this particular project.
Thank you, Mr. Treisenberg. And before we get to them, and we will, I'll see if council has any questions for you or comments, and I'll start with Ms. Behringer.
I have no questions.
Okay, going that way, I'll go to Mr. Dellinger.
Question on the information you provided on the parking. And are UDO stipulates the parking requirements for residents and guests? And you mentioned the, their numbers for clubhouses and things, are those stipulated in our UDO as well, or are they not?
We do have them for recreation-type amenities, so we've always, since I've been here, we've always been breaking it down by particular use where we can. So, it doesn't say recreation amenity in an apartment complex. It'll just, it just says for recreation amenities based on occupancy. Yeah, there is some flexibility there, depending on how the site is designed, as to whether or not those parking spaces would be used at the same time, or whether there could be overlap, particularly with guests. And so, it really kind of depends, though, from site to site. This one, I think, this particular layout does have a little bit of an advantage in that regard in that the site lays out in pieces, so to speak. Most of them tend to be very clustered, and it's all kind of there. So...
Like, just for, yeah, for clarity, so the parking requirement is based on the number of bedrooms, and then there are the other stipulations around amenities and other things that are kind of superficially included in that. So, but we don't have an explicit requirement for parking spaces for clubhouses and recreation structures in our UDO. It's just sort of accounted for in that resident and guest number.
That's a, that's a very good question, and I don't know, going back, like I say, it's interesting how that has changed, and I didn't realize that it had changed. I would have to go back to the very beginning of when those requirements were put together as to whether they envisioned that, or perhaps back in the day, amenities weren't as plentiful. You might have had a tennis court or something, but you probably didn't have a pool per se- some of the older complexes may or may not have that. But I think that's a fair question as to whether or not those parking requirements should or were ever intended to cover that. And I'm sorry, I don't have an exact answer.
And one question, you talk about the road alignment in Broomfield-Hunter. From what I could tell, that road is in Raleigh and in Garner. So, the west side of it goes into Raleigh, and then it comes down into Garner. And so, my question is, we have these requirements for doing improvements to that road, has Raleigh been engaged on improving that road?
Let me take a look at the, while they're giving their testimony, let me take a look at the map and see exactly how that falls, and I'll get back to you, if I may.
Thank you.
Mr. Vance, anything on Mr. Treisenberg?
Yes. Mr. Treisenberg, when this came to us before for the rezoning, the site plan was made available to us then. Has that site plan changed? I think you mentioned, it has not changed. Has not changed. The only thing, well, not the only thing, but the elevations that we have now, we did not have before. The elevations that we currently have, they were not shown at the rezoning, is that correct?
Right. They would have been, they probably, they might have been buried in the packet somewhere that was put on the SharePoint site, but we did not call those out at that time, no.
For the questions.
Okay, I'll go to Mr. Singleton.
Uh, this time.
Okay, Mr. Matthews.
Nothing this time.
Nothing this time, okay. Okay, council, of course Jeff will be here, but if you're satisfied, once you've heard, we'll take the next person who wants to testify, assuming that will be somebody from the applicant.
Good evening, I'm Tom Johnson with the Law Firm of Williams Mullen at 301 Fayetteville Street, Suite 1700 in Raleigh, here on behalf of the applicant. I will need to get Jeff's assistance, I guess, to pull up. I do have a few slides to show. I don't need to show them right now, no rush, I've got some other things to discuss first, but it is on the desktop, Jeff. But I appreciate your, Mayor and council, hearing us on this, as you did previously on the rezoning. I do ask that our application and associated documents, as well as the staff report, be admitted into evidence and support of our application at this time. And in addition, I will say for the record that we accept the conditions that are listed in the staff report. We accept those conditions to the special use permit. So, I did want to make that upfront. What I'm going to do is go through the various requirements that you have, the eight things that you have to touch on as council, and summarize those for council tonight, just based upon the evidences before you, including the application. I do have the engineer, the traffic engineer, and the developer here to speak at the appropriate time, or be available for questions, however council would want to deal with that. The first thing we, of course, the first finding that needs to be made is the proposed use will not endanger public health and safety. As was presented in the staff report and has been presented in terms of the technical review committee, it meets the fire department requirements and fire code. There are two access points per the ordinance requirements. It meets stormwater requirements, it meets the traffic requirements, and we're doing improvements related to the two access points into Grinnell Street, but did not have to do other improvements because of the improvements that had already been done to Tryon Road, which didn't require us to do some other improvements with respect to traffic. It will have public water and sewer, and to the degree we can, as was mentioned in the staff report, we're preserving the wetlands and respecting the riparian buffers on site, which provides additional open space, given the way this property is configured. Second finding is a use will not substantially injure value of adjoining and abutting properties, being a residential use and having a residential multifamily use to the north, to the southeast, I mean southwest, and adjoining retail and some other businesses. It will not adversely impact those businesses, in fact, supports them. Will support the retail by providing residents nearby who can walk and will not have to drive as far and to those amenities that are close by. And this is an undeveloped piece of property that is being developed. There will be no noise, odor, dust. Lighting will be in accordance with the standards, which Jeff mentioned earlier, which is low glare, no uplighting, and warm white lights. This will provide, in addition to residents close by for retail, which you typically want to do with multifamily, it will provide housing for employees who work nearby, either in retail or the adjoining businesses. The use will comply with the requirements of the ordinance. Jeff went through each one of those requirements in his presentation, and we met all of those. We did present a parking study because we are requesting a reduction in parking. The chart that Jeff put together with respect to local complexes where reductions have been given, one that this developer worked on previously was Timber Creek and got that reduction, and it's not experienced issues, as it mentioned in the chart, with that. But the reduction we're requesting is consistent with the information that was pulled together by staff in terms of parking. I do have a sealed parking study as your ordinance requires, that is in the record, and I have the traffic engineer who can speak specifically to that, once I go through my presentation, and certainly he's available to answer questions in that regard. The use is consistent with the town's adopted transportation plans and other plans and policies. Your comprehensive plan required or anticipates that this use calls for mixed use and this be a mixed activity center. And Jeff, if you could, I don't know whether I can do that here, but my third slide, or fourth slide, maybe, it shows that, you know, this is from, directly from the Garner Forward Plan, it shows, you know, multifamily uses within this tract of property, so that kind of is consistent with the plan. And the second, if you'll take the next slide, Jeff, it shows the actual mixed-use activity center for Garner Station that this is part of, and the kind of slash-marked property is this property which was slated for mixed use. The other thing it shows in your comp plan is that, basically, this property gets touched by a radius from the retail to the south, showing that it's within a quarter mile or walking distance, five-minute walking distance to the adjoining retail, which is really a good amenity to have. You want to have your multifamily adjoining those retail uses as your plan recognizes. Other, it recognizes was some, was really good information as I dug through that. The desire is to create more diverse housing opportunities to attract young residents and to have amenities such as the pool, the dog park, the playground, cabana that has been committed to in this project. It's recognized in your comprehensive plan that there's a demand for rental units that's unabated, that will be unabated for the foreseeable future. That's a direct quote from the comprehensive plan. Demand for housing in general is increasing faster than the new stock that is being constructed. Again, that's from your comprehensive plan directly, in a direct quote. Proximity to shopping and services is important for multifamily. No traffic congestion, again, the improvements for Tryon Road help that. This is on a BRT route, is now planned, but even without that, has convenient access to major arteries for folks getting in and out of this project. We have a lot of open space and have provided for that open space with respect to the wetlands and the riparian buffers. The next standard is compatibility with adjacent uses, the proximate neighborhood, and in terms of building scale, site design buffering. You see the elevations that were listed in the staff report that show that this is compatible and provides a new design that would be attractive to residents. As I said earlier, no noise, dust, odor, or lighting, and lighting will remain on-site, no traffic issues. There's adjacent multifamily already, and the landscaping and open space requirements are being met on-site. And this is not unusual from other apartment complexes in terms of its scale and size. It's a three-story complex, it's typical of the area. Number six, no environmental or other adverse impacts. We're doing stormwater control that meets standards, we'll do the nitrogen payment, and we're respecting the riparian buffers and the wetlands are being preserved. Public safety, transportation, and utilities is the next finding you need to make. It does comply with that. We have water and sewer from the City of Raleigh. There's easy access to the transportation system. We are doing the median related to access as required on Broomfield-Hunter and doing half of Grinnell Street, as well as a fee and lieu, so we're providing for transportation support. Garner and Raleigh fires close by, and as we mentioned in the prior hearing, the closest available unit is the one that gets the call, whether it's Garner or Raleigh or some of the volunteer departments in the county, which it could be. As I mentioned earlier, bus wrapper transit is planned to be along Grinnell Street, but even if it's not, there is good access to the major roadways in the area. Assurancees and maintenance is your eighth finding. This particular developer, you already have experience with them in Timber Creek, and it is well-maintained. They have other projects in Burlington and Southern Pines. They are an apartment developer, but they're local or live within the state. They are an apartment developer, but they're local, or live within the state. They're from Wilmington. They take care of their projects, and this is a family business that manages these projects. So they are well-done, well-maintained, well-managed. Jeff, if you could go back to the, they had this slide on parking. I do want to mention this too, because there were questions about parking, and again, I can have our park, our traffic engineer come up and speak to it. We used this before, when we were talking about Timber Creek, and use it again, just showing other cities in the state and what their parking requirements would be for a similar project. And this includes the major cities, including Raleigh, which are much less than Garner's requirement, but we're doing in between those requirements and, you know, Garner's requirements in terms of what we propose, and it's consistent with the other parking reductions that had been given in the past, but I think this is helpful. In addition, the Burlington, in Burlington, the Burlington Complex has the experience the same as the Timber Creek Complex, and it has had no difficulties in terms of parking, and that one is set at 1.5 spaces per unit, which is less than we're proposing here. So, and they have not experienced difficulties. I will tender, I mean, I can have Jeff come up and summarize what's in his report, but I think it might be better, being cognizant of the council's time, if he's available to answer questions, you may have him about the report, since it's a sealed report. And again, our engineer, Mr. Franz, he prepared that, he sealed it, signed it, he's available to answer any questions from a site plan perspective. And Mr. Tucker can ask, answer anything here from the developer to talk about maintenance of the complex, or any other development issues you may, questions you may have, and so I tender him as well, and they're all under oath and available to speak. So I'm available for us to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, for your very good presentation. And I will ask counsel this time, there may be that most of the questions can be answered by yourself, if they want to hear from any one of the other folks with you, we can bring them up. So I'll start with Mr. Matthews over here. Any questions for Mr. Johnson?
Sorry, I think it's been answered.
His presentation, okay? Mr. Singleton, anything?
No, sir.
Okay, Ms. Behringer? Mr. Dellinger?
Question on the timetable for construction, and the timetable for all the other road improvements, and infrastructure and transportation improvements. Where do those all line up?
Those all line up, I think, a lot of it is governed by your, the transportation improvements are governed by your ordinance, I think. Is it Jeff's certificate of occupancy? So those have to be done by the time we're issued a certificate of occupancy. The phasing, I'll let Mr. Tucker speak about how the project will be phased.
Hi, Adam Tucker, from 111 Princess Street, Wilmington, North Carolina. So you guys' ordinance for these types of projects is very arduous for the developer up front. There's a lot of information required, site plans, utility plans, roadway plans, and all that elongates the front-end process. But the good news is, for us, we've done it now, and we've got a solid plan put together, and we hope to be able to, if we approve tonight, we'll work to make that plan into a submit, or we can submit to the town for technical review within the next 30 days. So as soon as we can get the plan in and get the, get it approved, we'll be ready to start construction. We've already sent, not to be presumptuous, but we've sent the project financials to the banks and getting financing ramped up, so if we can start, let's say we get our plans in in 30 days, and it's 60 days or 90 days, and it's the summertime when we would start, we would start in the summer, and I would project anywhere from 12 to 18 months, depending on COVID and supply chain issues. So it's a little bit of a gamble right now on how long it'll last, but just say on the outside data, a year and a half to get everything completed, and of course, the roadwork would be completed as part of that prior to occupancy.
Roadwork that the city of Raleigh would do related to the BRT and the extension and realignment of Grinnell is not related to your timeframe at all, so those transportation improvements have nothing to do with your timetable?
Yes, sir. Correct.
That is correct about the BRT, but, you know, the other traffic improvements and the access to existing network will still there, be there regardless, and BRT is just another advantage that it will have when that happens.
Okay. Let me go to Mr. Vance, if you're still contemplating, Mr. Dellinger, I'll come back to you. Do you have anything for the attorney and/or any of the other expert witnesses he has?
I have no questions.
Okay. All right. Well, I'll ask counsel, unless you just particularly want to bring one of those up, if counsel desires to hear from any one of the other folks here, the traffic engineer or others, what say you, counsel?
Just another question. He had mentioned pedestrian connectivity.
Yes.
And we, this came up in the other, but since this is a different hearing, how exactly does that pedestrian connectivity work with the adjoining commercial property?
Well, we're adding sidewalk, you know, along the front edge that we can, and of course, Grinnell Street will be done. Yeah, so we'll have, you know, sidewalk along Broomfield-Hunter. I mean, the access, as of now, would be Broomfield-Hunter and Junction. Ultimately, Grinnell's going to connect to the retail to the south. Grinnell will be constructed, and the sidewalk associated with that will be constructed down to the point where we can, and otherwise, we're doing a fee in lieu for the future development of that. So ultimately, that connection will be there, but it depends upon, to some degree, the future construction. But regardless of that, the trip distance that you have to get from this complex to adjoining businesses is short, which is what you want to have. That's the goal, is to get your multifamily close to your services and your businesses, which is what this does.
If the road goes through.
I'm sorry?
If the road goes through.
Well.
There's not really a walkable way from this subdivision, even though it's maybe 100 feet from the commercial space. You can't walk there. There are no sidewalks on Junction. You're not going to walk down 401 and cut across, so it's a 10 or 15-minute walk.
Right.
So, just to be clear.
I understand that. But I think that's all in connection with future plans. We are part of that, those positive moves, by doing the sidewalk and doing the construction at least of half of Grinnell, a good bit of the way. But regardless, even if somebody has to get in a car and go, it's not very far. You can get to those businesses on, you know, 40170 really easily. You can get to Garner Station really easily, in a very short distance and a short trip, which is a positive thing for these residents.
Okay, and I would agree with you. The distance there will be minimal, and it'll be helpful. Anything else for Mr. Johnson? Anybody? Anything? Did you plan to present anyone else, or it was going to be at our choosing, I guess?
At your choosing. We have the sealed drawings that are part of the record that the engineer can speak to. We have the sealed parking study, which is a requirement under your ordinance. The parking expert is here, and will stand on his report, unless you have specific questions. I mean, I can have him come up here, and he's going to say what he said in his report. I can have the engineer come up, and he's going to say exactly what the site plan showed with the analysis from Mr. Trezenberg, so I would tender them as experts, they are here and available, to be cross-examined by the counsel, mayor and counsel, or whoever else may want to.
Right. And I will probably dispense with that, unless counsel wants to hear from any of those in person. I'm seeing there's no interest in that at this point. I think it's been covered quite well. Beyond your presentation, Mr. Johnson, and we'll dispense with the others, is there any other information that come before us at this time? Anything, Jeff?
Just to respond back to Mr. Dellinger's question, I said I would research. Yes, there does appear to be some jurisdictional fuzziness, to put it one way, along the Tryon Road, old Tryon Road corridor. IMAP shows municipal limits along the southern edge. ETJ is shown going down the middle. Agreements would say that you're not supposed to be annexing on either side of that, but from a practical standpoint, because it is DOT right-of-way and not currently a municipal right-of-way, and all of the construction being able to be done within that right-of-way, there should not be any issues, but I did confer with the town engineer, and he will reach out to city of Raleigh as a courtesy, just to make sure that there's no issues, but otherwise, he would coordinate that strictly with NC DOT as part of their driveway permitting process and roadway improvements.
DOT been consulted already in this project?
I know that they're aware of it, yes.
So the applicant has made his presentation. Was there anyone else who came here to speak to this issue this evening that has been sworn in, who wants to speak at this time? Okay. Not seeing any, and not hearing from anybody, I'm prepared to close a public hearing and ask for a motion. I believe we've heard all the discussion we want, or is there something else?
Another question for Mr. Trezenberg.
Okay.
On the Grinnell realignment, and what happens to the accessibility of this site during the construction and extension of Grinnell? There's only one, would there only be one in and out of this apartment complex while that construction is taking place?
If, if they were to phase it as such that they did the necessary improvements to Broomfield-Hunter first, and then were to phase in Grinnell, they could get up to those 75 units CO'd with that one entrance, but otherwise, the balance of it, Grinnell will have to be finished in its totality.
They're doing the improvements on Grinnell, but then when the BRT comes through, and that road is completed, and the BRT lanes come in, I would imagine Grinnell would be completely shut down for an extended period of time. They're, because around the BRT, they're doing the site, the station planning and the road designs now, and those are wider roads with dedicated bus lanes, and so I would imagine it'd be shut down, and it'd be only one entrance.
So the one advantage that they could work into that process as part of the construction phasing is that because it is a multi-lane facility with a median, they could actually construct the other two lanes first, and then, once those are open, then they could close the other two with permitted cross-access in for the driveways. I've seen that done a few times. So that, given that we've got that, if it was just a two-lane road, I'd be, you know, forever, then I'd be very concerned, but because it is multi-lane, that will give them flexibility in the future for, for construction phasing.
I just want to make sure that's looked at. We always are looking for that multi-access, multi-access points for large subdivisions, so.
I will ask Gabby to convey that to Mr. Patel.
All right, thank you. That's all.
Okay. Thank you all. Okay, I'm going to officially close this public hearing. Thank you all for your presentation. And counsel, I believe this man is ripe for a motion at this time, so I'll entertain a motion on this request.
Mr. Mayor, I'm prepared to make a motion, and just a brief comment, this is a very unusual piece of property, and I think what has been presented to us is, will be good. No project's ever perfect that I've ever seen. We, you know, we can find things. BRT, if it gets there, what they're prepared for will be most certainly a plus, but we have no control of that, obviously, other than to encourage it. But having said all that, I find that the application, SUP SP 21-08, meets the town's eight criteria for special use permits, as identified in Article 3.9.2 Delta. Therefore, I move that the town council approve SUP SP 21-08, 601 Tryon Apartments with 11 site-specific conditions to be listed on the permit, and that will be prepared by staff.
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Matthews and Mr. Vance, who seconded the motion. Unless counsel has further concerns or questions, I'm going to call for a vote. Is there any last minute, yeah, go ahead?
Just to be clear on the record, I'm going to vote no on this, because I don't find it to be consistent with the transportation plan, even though it is consistent with the zoning. I don't think that this is dense enough for the level of traffic that's going to go through there, and is planned for by our collaboration with Raleigh. It's a missed opportunity. That's my statement. Thank you.
Okay. All right. If you're ready, counsel, if you favor the motion that is before you this time, would you vote aye?
Aye.
Aye.
If you do not favor the motion that is for you this time, would you vote no?
No.
Okay. The chair notes that the motion passes by a vote of three to two, and declares that the, the resolution is approved. So let me thank you, gentlemen, for your coming back before us, and on a rainy, cold night, and presenting. I do think that this will be a good addition to our town, personally, so we look forward to the progress that you make on that, okay? Thank you very much. Okay. All right. As they're departing, I will call the next case, which is another public hearing, has to do with SUP SP 21-05, Beacon Commerce Park. I have on here that Ms. Allison Jones is the presenter, so is she here virtually? Okay.
Yes, I am.
Okay. Has, have you been sworn, Ms. Jones, as a witness?
I heard Stella swearing in, everyone else not had my right hand up, and I said I do, so I'm not sure if that counts for swearing in or not, but...
Okay. I'll ask the attorney if that sounds sufficient, or...
That's sufficient.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. Jones, are you ready for your presentation?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Formally open the hearing.
Mr. Mayor, before she starts, if you could ask for any ex parte communications or other disclosures?
Excuse me. Thank you, thank you, exactly. Yeah, this is a quasi-judicial hearing. Persons must be sworn prior to giving testimony. I'll go ahead and quote the other portions of this. Under state law, the party is entitled to a fair hearing, so counsel, I will ask you, do any of you have a fixed opinion prior to the hearing that is not subject to change, or have you had any ex parte communications, or do any of you have close familial, business, or other associational relationships with any affected person, or have a financial interest in the outcome? If that is the case, you should acknowledge it at this time before going ahead. Okay, hearing none? Okay, I would remind you, this is a fact-finding hearing, and all incompetent material and substantial evidence that is not repetitive is allowed. Only expert witnesses based on training and experience may testify as to impacts on property values, traffic, safety, and/or noise levels. Council members are only allowed to receive factual information during this hearing, and are not allowed to discuss the case outside of this hearing. Okay, with that as a prefacing comment, I believe we're ready to move ahead at this point. So, Ms. Jones, if you will go ahead at this time, we'll hear from you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Let me pull up...
All right.
I'm sorry about that, I'm trying to get the screen pulled up. There we go. Does, are you guys seeing the, my presentation?
We still have a very good picture of the Garner Town Hall on my screen, but we do not have your screen available to us yet. Yep, I believe we're getting there. The opening page, Beacon Commerce Park, Building 3.
All right. Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. As Mr. Mayor's already said, I am here to present Beacon Commerce Park, Building 3, SUP SP 21-05. The applicant is HMBP BC LLC. The owner is Dogwood Associates LLC, and the location is 4900 Jones Saucers Road. The tract size is 21.3 acres, and the proposed use is a light industrial service. The current zoning is I-2, which is heavy industrial, and the overlay district is I-40. There was a neighborhood meeting for this project that was held on September 30 of 2021 at 6 o'clock at the G-PAC. There were three people in attendance, and a detailed list of questions and answers were provided to you in the staff report. Excuse me. And here is a overall picture of the site. As you can see, that the existing Wilmington Road will be abandoned, the right-of-way will be abandoned, because it's going through the proposed building, so that can't happen. And the newly-aligned Wilmington Road into Calabar Street... And the newly-aligned Wilmington Road into Calabar Street over here on the right-hand side. Just want to let you know the setbacks for this project are 50 foot for the front. The rear is zero or 50 feet. Side is zero or 25, and the corner setback is 35 feet. And here is a proposed elevation of the building, similar to the other two buildings under construction. Open space, parking land and open space are not required for non-residential development. However, this project will add a multi-use path along Jones Sausage Frontage, as this has been identified in the Greenway Quarter. Landscapes and buffer requirements. Petri coverage, it would require to have 10% and then preserve 10%. However, they will have more than 10% once everything is all said and done with additional plantings that are acquired that will be on-site as well. The perimeter buffers, their perimeter buffers are 65 feet and 45 feet. Lastly, the buffer requirements. Street buffers, there are 15 feet street buffer is required along Jones Sausage Road and Calabar Street. And there is a 25-foot street buffer around the proposed cul-de-sac. Street trees are being provided along both the frontages every 40 feet as required. Lighting has been shown in conformance with the UDO, as well as meeting staff recommendations for LED light fixtures, excuse me. All fixtures have zero uplight, low glare, and warm white light exhibiting a color temperature of no more than 4,000 Kelvin. Parking, parking for office use is one space per 300 feet of floor area, while parking for warehouse is one space for every two employees on the maximum shift, but no less than 5,000 square feet of area devoted to this use. They're required to have 139 parking spaces. They're proposing 261. The inspections department, together with the fire department, has reviewed and preliminary approved this plan as proposed. Flood plan environmental, this site does not contain any, excuse me, the site does contain a new river, perium buffer, excuse me, river buffer area, which is being preserved and protected as required. Stormwater management, Beacon Commerce Park is a commercial development that is not located within the water protection area. This subject is, the site is subject to water quality requirements for nitrogen and water quantity requirements for the 1, 10, 25-year storm events. This plan proposes a retention pond with a level spreader, vegetated filter strip to satisfy all water quality and water quantity requirements for stormwater. A nitrogen offset and buy-down is required for this project. Water and sewer, this parcel will be connected to the City of Raleigh's public water and sewer system. Infrastructure sidewalks, this site of the Building Three is at the southwest corner of Jones Sausage Road and Calabar Street. The improvements to the adjacent roads for this development were reviewed with the overall Commerce Park subdivision plan that was probably thinking 2020 or beginning 2021. Jones Sausage Road is the area is built to its ultimate section, a four-lane divided road. This development will add turn lanes off of Jones Sausage Road into the site as indicated by the TIA. The overall development will realign the existing Wilmington Road to join Calabar Street west of its intersection with Jones Sausage Road. Sorry. Roads and sidewalks continue, the existing Wilmington Road within a cul-de-sac service serving the rear of the building lot, Building Three, as well as adjacent private property with current access off of Wilmington Road. The remaining Wilmington Road right-of-way will be abandoned. The site of Building Three will be accessed by a driveway off the new cul-de-sac in the rear, a new right-in, right-out driveway off of Jones Sausage Road, and a shared full-access driveway for the Commerce Park. After sufficient review of plans and revision, staff finds as project is now proposed may be considered consistent with the regulations of the UDO, so long as the following project-specific conditions are met. Prior to the issuance of the CO, the stormwater control measures maintenance plan and associated memorandum of agreement shall be approved and recorded within the Wake County Sheriff's Office. And prior to the issuance of building permit, the proposed lot must be allotted record. The Garner Plan Department shall be in receipt of documentation from NC DOT showing that the vacated right-of-way for Wilmington Road has been abandoned. The new public water line within a realigned Wilmington Road must be accepted by City of Raleigh. An easement plaque must be recorded for City of Raleigh of access of to the water meters. Driveway permits shall be secured from NC DOT. Payment of engineering inspection fees shall be paid to Town Garner. Payment of public utility fees shall be paid to the City of Raleigh. And the Garner Department, excuse me, and the Engineering Department shall be in receipt of the nitrogen offset payment prior to the issuance of the building permit. Um, I believe that the applicant is in, in the chambers for questions and comments or concerns, and I'm here as well for questions for staff.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Jones, for your presentation. And I will ask counsel this time if they have questions of you before we get to the applicant. So counsel, I'll start with Mr. Singleton this time, if you have any questions for Ms. Jones.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Matthews?
Not this time.
Okay, Ms. Behringer? Okay, Mr. Vance, I'll circle around, come back to Mr. Dallinger, anything? Okay, Mr. Dallinger? Okay. All right, Ms. Jones, you'll be on standby, I'm sure. So we will now recognize someone from, who will represent the applicant for their presentation. Good evening and welcome. If you'll state your name and address, that will help us keep our record straight.
Good evening, my name is Isabel Maddox. I'm an attorney representing this project tonight. Applicants Hamilton Merit and Beacon Development, the prospective developers. My address is P.O. Box 946, Raleigh 27602. Thank you for having us tonight. It's nice to be in Garner, but for the weather, it's nice to be live and in person. Tonight, I have with me tonight Greg Sandroiter of Hamilton Merit, the property developer, James Whitaker, PE, our civil engineer of Advanced Civil Design, Tom Hester, MAI and real estate broker, our appraiser, Lyle Overcash, also a PE, traffic engineer of Kimbley Horn. This is, this is the third time we've been here with this same general plan. We came with the subdivision plan, we came with our first site plan, which was the first two buildings. This is the third building. And so we think a lot of, a lot of the details have already been, you know, vetted out by staff, all of them vetted out by staff, but by this body as well. And as you know, while the zoning permits this use, because of the intensity, the size of the building and the presence of the I-40 overlay, it requires a special use permit site plan. And as you also know, there are eight standards that have to be met. I'm going to go through those briefly and tell you which one of our experts. I'm going to call each of our experts up here. Unlike the prior case where the attorney kind of summarized, I'm going to actually have the experts come and testify to you about their particular areas of expertise. So the first finding is that the proposed use will not endanger the public safety and health and safety, and that will be spoken to by our civil engineer, Mr. Whitaker. Finding two, the proposed use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining properties. That will be testified by our appraiser, Tom Hester. Finding three, the proposed use will comply with all applicable provisions of the UDO. And you heard your staff confirm it, and I'll also have James Whitaker touch on that. Finding four, the proposed use is consistent with the transportation plan and other adopted plans and policies. We'll have our transportation engineer, Lyle Overcash, speak to that. Finding five, the proposed use is compatible with adjacent uses in terms of building scale, site design, buffering, screening, operating characteristic. And that will be a combination of all three of our experts speaking to those aspects of that finding. Finding six, any significant impacts resulting from the use will be mitigated or offset, including impacts on the natural environment. Mr. Whitaker will speak to that. Finding seven, the public safety, transportation, utility facilities and services will be available to serve the subject property while maintaining sufficient levels of service. That will be a combination of our civil and our transportation engineers. And finally, finding eight, adequate assurances of continuing maintenance have been provided. That will be our developer, Mr. Sandroiter. So as I said, staff report confirms compliance with UDO and consistency with the comprehensive plan. I think Allison was fairly thorough in going through those points from staff report. We will, though, present testimony through evidence of experts. And we want to give you a basis for making the findings that you are required to make. So, and I'm going to, I'm going to ask each of these experts to come and give all of his testimony at once, even though they're going to be sometimes testifying as to several different findings. I think that will be the most efficient. So first, I want to call Greg Sandroiter. Before we get into the findings, I want him to give you an overview of the plans and also address meetings with neighbors.
Mr. Mayor, if I may interrupt, can we confirm that all the witnesses have been sworn in?
Yes, actually, I failed to do that at the beginning, and we probably didn't swear everybody. And so we do need to get you sworn in at this time, if you'll see the town. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Now we can proceed.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Greg Sandroiter. I reside at 104 Lake Cliff Court in Cary. Thank you for hearing this case tonight. Just very briefly, as Isabel had asked, a short project description and also some of the, the elements we have changed based on our consultation with the nearest neighborhood, which is the Hunter's Mark Neighborhood. This building had a few elements to it that we have revised after we heard citizen and neighbor comments. Number one, as you know from the plans, it's a 260,000 square foot building. Trucks are loaded in the rear, and we've got some parking out front. The, the neighbors had asked us to reconsider a vehicular curb cut that we had across from Hay River at Calabar. So we removed that from the plan in consultation with the neighbors. And we, we instead put a right-in, right-out along Jones Sausage Road to serve that right-angled parking lot. Number two, we have a large vegetative landscape buffer along the western side of Calabar to help screen the building from that Hay River Street. We will be not simply resurfacing, but actually reconstructing the, the base and aggregate along Calabar. It's interesting that from Jones Sausage Road up to where Calabar currently stubs by Hay River, it's a street that has not been dedicated either to NC DOT or to the town of Garner. And so the street was not built to NC DOT standards. We'll be reworking that whole street and as part of their Wilmington Road realignment, having the NC DOT accept that section of existing Calabar for maintenance. And so we think that's, that's a benefit to, both to the town and to the neighborhood. And we've also engaged with the neighborhood about how we handle the entrance signs. Have been a variety of discussions had very recently about how we may be able to assist the Hunter's Mark Neighborhood on the current entrance signs loc, current entrance signs location, which are currently at Calabar and Jones Sausage Road, and perhaps relocating them so they're more appropriately placed closer to the neighborhood as an entry to the neighborhood. And so those are just a few things we've done in consultation with residents, and I appreciate your attention. Isabel, who should be next?
James.
James Whitaker, with Advanced Civil Design.
Speaking to findings one, three, five, six, and seven.
Pleasure to be with you again, Mr. Mayor and council members. Isabel said that this is our third time in front of you for this project, so it's nice to be here again. I've got a signed affidavit that, that we'll be providing you, so I'll try not to go on for too long here. Everything is in the affidavit, but I'll try to hit the, the high points on everything. I'm a professional engineer licensed in the state of North Carolina. I have over 20 years' experience as a project manager, designer, and surveyor throughout North Carolina and many neighboring states, and have done over 200 projects, very similar to this one, throughout the country. I previously worked on the SUP subdivision that was before you and approved in November 2nd, 2020, which Ms. Jones mentioned. That was the, the basis for the road realignments for, that we've been talking about and established all the access points along Jones Sausage. In my, my opinion, the site plan does meet all the requirements for a special use site plan under the UDO. When considered with the subdivision plan previously approved, it complies with all the applicable provisions of the Uniform Development Organants. Regarding buffering, again, I don't want to repeat too, too much of what Ms. Jones had mentioned, but we do have a perimeter buffer between 45 and 60 feet. We've got 7.4 acres of open space and tree, tree coverage area, and that area meets the 10% requirement in the UDO. Utilities will be served by the City of Raleigh. We've already had plans reviewed by the City of Raleigh for sewer and water for this site. Road improvements for this, this site, the only new road improvement is the right-in, right-out off Jones Sausage. The Wilmington Road realignment and cul-de-sac and, and the other access points, again, were either approved with the subdivision or the Building One and Two plans. Lighting will be the required LED fixtures with the cool color temperature of no more than 4,000 Kelvin. Parking, again, we exceed the UDO requirements by providing 261 spaces for the building. Regarding operations, most operations will incur inside the building, limiting the impacts of noise, dust, and odors. There may be limited outdoor storage as allowed under the UDO with some forklift use. However, forklifts are typically gas-powered and very quiet. Such uses will be screened with generous buffers. Regarding stormwater, again, as staff mentioned, there's a wet retention basin that will treat all the stormwater runoff from the site in accordance with the UDO. The site plan is compatible with adjacent uses in terms of site design, buffering, and screening. Proposed use is compatible with the existing distribution center across the street. Any adverse impacts on adjacent residential uses and/or the natural environment will be mitigated through buffers, setbacks, lighting controls, and stormwater control measures. As a result of such improvements and mitigation measures, is my professional opinion that development in accordance with the site plan will not endanger public health or safety and will not be overly burdensome on existing public safety and utility services in the area. The subject property is zoned heavy industrial I-2 within the I-40 overlay. Both allow for a variety of industrial uses, which this site meets. And my opinion, the site is consistent with the goals of the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan. Comprehensive Plan designates the site as an employment campus which contemplates an employment center supporting commercial uses, including the light manufacturing, assembly, distribution, and warehousing. Section 2A of the Comprehensive Plan specifically addresses the northeast gateway of the town and states that the entrance related to Jones Sausage Road is an untapped resource due to its access to the interstate and proximity to major employers and distribution centers, and that the development area should encourage, encourage the core industrial purpose. That, that completes my testimony on that. I did have one comment that, I don't know if this is the right time to present it or not, but on, on the staff recommendations and the requirements, we're wondering if we could just make one minor modification to the requirement regarding the abandonment of the Wilmington. the Wilmington Road right-of-way. If we could just add that the right-of-way within the development parcel will be abandoned. There's a portion of the existing Wilmington Road right-of-way that would not be abandoned at the time we're constructing this, just based on agreements with D O T, where the right-of-way is going to be transferred from D O T to Garner Maintenance, and that has to come after a certain period of time when the new road is built. So that's just, it's a minor clarification. I think that's what's intended with the requirement that obviously all of the right-of-way within this development site would have to be abandoned before we could build a road on it.
I understand that would relate to Item B as listed in mine.
Yes, it is Item B. Yes, you're right.
Thank you.
Other than that, I'm happy to answer questions if anyone has any.
Any questions for Mr. Whitaker? Okay. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
And I want to offer an affidavit. Shall I give that to the city attorney? Oh, sorry. Next, I'd like to call on Tom Hester, M A I Appraiser, again, to present expert testimony on findings two and five.
Welcome, Mr. Hester.
Thank you. Good evening, counsel. Again, I'm Tom Hester, M A I designated appraiser. That's a designation from the Appraisal Institute. I'm a state-certified general appraiser in North Carolina. Been appraising properties in Wake County for over 35 years. I've been before you a couple of times before regarding this same subdivision and the two buildings that are under development already. I have looked at this property and this particular site plan. What you're asking me to comment on is the effect on nearby property values. The immediately adjacent properties to this proposed building are also already industrial properties, but in the general vicinity, the closest large development is Hunter's Mark subdivision, and have used the Wake County G I S data to look at prices in the Hunter's Mark subdivision in the period of 2016, 2017, and then compared that to the prices in the period of 2020 and 2021. Between those two time periods is the development of the large Amazon Warehouse, which is across the street, across the road from this property. And I did determine using the G I S data that the property values continued to increase in Hunter's Mark during those two time periods. Also compared that increase to the same time periods in the town of Garner in general, and found that Hunter's Mark was appreciating at or above the general appreciation rate for the town of Garner for houses built since 2000. So using that data, looking at other similar properties, other similar developments, it is my conclusion, it is my professional opinion, that the proposed subdivision will not, the proposed building will not substantially injure the value of the adjoining or the abutting properties. It's also my professional opinion that the proposed development will be compatible with the area in which it's located. You have an affidavit. I'll be glad to answer any questions, if you have any.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hester, counsel, while Mr. Hester is available. Any questions for him at this time over here? Either none, sir? Thank you very much.
And next, I'd like Lyle Overcash, traffic engineer, to speak to the traffic findings.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. How are you doing tonight?
Good.
My name is Lyle Overcash. Office address is 421 Fayetteville Street, Raleigh, North Carolina 27601. I'm a senior project manager at Kimley Horn. I've been a traffic engineer in the Triangle for over 23 years. I am a licensed traffic engineer, State of North Carolina 26218 is my license number. I have significant experience in analyzing traffic impacts on the proposed site plans and subdivisions in various municipalities in North Carolina, including the town of Garner. My firm evaluated the subdivision plan for the proposed industrial subdivision, the original one located on Jones Sausage Road. That was S P 2002 from a traffic perspective. Followed up with a evaluation of the special use permit for Building 3 for the J S Commerce Park in connection with the special use application, S P 2105. Traffic impact analysis was conducted in 2019 for the overall site, and a follow-up addendum, traffic analysis addendum, was conducted in 2021 for this project, and both documents were approved by the town of Garner and N C D O T. And the access and improvements shown for the project and mentioned previously are consistent with the T I A and the T I A addendum. In my professional opinion, the site plan is consistent with the transportation plan, other relevant adopted plans and policies, and the stated purpose and intent of the U D O. As mentioned, the overall project involves the realignment of Wilmington Road and connection of Wilmington Road to Calabar Street, which is contemplated by the town of Garner's Ford Transportation Plan. The new realigned portion of Wilmington Road will be constructed as a town of Garner three-lane major collector with a 74-foot right-of-way. Traffic ingress and egress from the site will be directly from Jones Sausage Road via two access points, one right-in, right-out, and one full-movement driveway. In addition, traffic will ingress and egress from Wilmington Road through another full-movement access drive. The majority of the site traffic is expected to utilize these driveways to access the site. These improvements in access points will provide overall acceptable traffic safety circulation conditions in the area. And so in my professional opinion, the project and the site plan are compatible with the adjacent uses in terms of traffic generation. In conclusion, in my professional opinion, the existing transportation network, together with the planned road improvements, will be sufficient to serve the project, including the building shown on the site plan, and such building will have minimum impact on the roadway network and not interfere with the public safety and transportation services available to the existing development. That's included as affidavits, see, in your packet. If you have any questions, I'll answer those.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Mr. Overcash by counsel? Anybody?
Yes, I have a question. Yes, sorry. In reference to the type of traffic that's being anticipated for this development, say, for tractor-trailers, which entrance would be the major movement for your potential tractor-trailers coming in to the facility?
For the overall commerce parkers, multiple driveways on Jones Sausage Road for this building, they could either use the access on Wilmington Road, or most likely primary access will be using, I don't have a mouse, but the one on Jones Sausage Road, a traffic signal there.
Improvements will be made to the intersection of Calabar and Jones Sausage Road to accommodate, I guess, the turning movements of larger vehicles?
Yes. In the northwest corner of the intersection, we're going to greatly soften that radius to allow for the truck movements, and does have an impact to the traffic signal. We will have to replace the traffic signal cabinet and the signal pole in that corner.
Don't anticipate that as being a major movement for the larger vehicles?
It would be a combination with that driveway at the back and then the one on Jones Sausage Road.
Well, I have this, mayor.
Thank you. Anybody have questions for this? Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Overcash.
And finally, I'd like to call on Greg Sandroiter again to speak to just the continuing maintenance, finding number eight.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. And just my comment on number eight is very brief, just as owners and the developers of the property, that the continuity of maintenance will be assured by our organization. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
So we do believe that we have prepared and presented substantial material and competent documentary and testimonial evidence, which will allow you to make each of the required findings. And just to confirm what Mr. Whitaker said about, generally speaking, would accept the conditions that were proposed by staff, which is that one qualification on the vacated right-of-way of Wilmington Road has been formally abandoned. We want to make sure we're as to this parcel on this site plan, just because there's a lot of phasing going on with the abandonment and some timing issues. We don't want anybody to think we're doing the whole abandonment with this project. So if staff can agree with us, we'll make sure that's specific to this project. And I think that's probably the intent, we just wanted to clarify. So we're all available for questions?
Okay, thank you. Yes. All right, counsel, before the attorney steps down, any questions, both from her presentation and the others that you've heard? I think you had a chance to question the others if you wanted to. Mr. Matthews, anything?
None, sir. Yes, Mr. Sandroiter, can I ask you a question? In regards to Buildings 1 and 2, when we approved them, there have been issues out there with overnight truck parking, and I believe we requested that on Buildings 1 and 2, that there were signage put out that there will be no overnight truck parking unless it was related directly to the use of the buildings that were there. Can we get this on Building number three?
Yes.
We don't want to create an opportunity that's going to cause any more truck headache for the residents at Hunter's Mark. So if that can be done, so we won't have overnight parking over there, particularly if they came out on Calabar, right by the behavior, but we do not want to-
Precisely right.
-present a situation that's gotten somewhat better, if you consider that.
May I clarify, because I remember that condition very clearly in our first site plan for Buildings 1 and 2, and those signs obviously will be installed once the buildings are complete to prevent no overnight parking for vehicles that are not associated with the project.
Exactly.
And so we'll be pleased to do that for this third building.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, going this way? Anything, Mr. Dillinger?
A question about the overnight parking. Even though you'll have signs up, how will you enforce no overnight parking by vehicles that are not associated with that project? Yes?
There may be, thank you for that question, there may be a variety of ways to enforce that, but my initial thought related to your question, ma'am, is that by posting it properly, we would be in a position to declare that vehicle as trespassing, and therefore we'd have a legal ability to have it either ticketed or removed. I'm sure there are other mechanisms as well, but that would be my initial thought.
Thank you, sir. Anything down here, Mr. Dillinger or Mr. Vance?
A couple of questions. I'll direct them to whomever can answer them, either it's staff or the applicant, but these are related to criteria's five and six. So five is the proposed use compatibility with adjacent approximate neighborhoods, building scale, site design, buffering, and screening. And then number six, any significant adverse impacts resulting from the use will be mitigated or offset, including impacts on the natural environment. So my question is, on the site plan, exactly where, since we tend to use, unfortunately, interchangeably buffering and screening and tree preservation, where exactly on this site is the tree preservation? And where are the buffers? And how big are they on? And I say this because when the first, the first phase of this came to, my biggest concern was the appearance and protection of the gateway. You mentioned the gateways, the northeast gateway. There's a very significant stand of trees at the corner of Calabar and Jones Sausage Road on the southwest side. And when I'm looking at the site plan, I can't tell if there is preservation there or if it's on the backside, and I see a winding path up here that seems to imply some type of sidewalk that would result in the trees being removed. So I'm curious on the entire site plan, where is the tree preservation? And how large are these buffers? And what preservation is going on along Calabar and Jones Sausage?
Okay, sure. Good, very good question. So the shaded area at the top of the page there, all of that shaded area is tree preserve area.
Unbuildable protected area, correct?
That's right. It's the tree preserve area, and then the smaller strips that run parallel to the property line, those are also buffer areas, but at the same time, they're all the trees that are being preserved. That's the dedicated tree preserve area.
That's my question. So on this Calabar and Jones Sausage intersection, I see the buffer line. How wide is that buffer?
So it's a street buffer along that area. It's a 15-foot required street buffer, but you will see that we've held the parking and the development area significantly off of that. It's actually outside of the 50-foot building setback in that area. And then the corner there is also all open space. You know, that whole area is intended to be heavily planted with enhanced landscaping, and that's why we left that much space there, so that we really could dress that whole corner up.
Someone mentioned 50- and 60-foot buffers somewhere. Where are those?
That's around the perimeter on the north side. Those are the required when you're adjacent to the residential uses. The street buffers are 15-foot required.
And that's zoned residential, but there's maybe one house back there. Over here, you have an entire neighborhood, interest to an entire neighborhood. So my big concern, the first time it came, was the preservation of that gateway, which is mentioned, you mentioned it, it's also mentioned in our comprehensive plan a few times about preserving our gateways into the town. And if all of the trees on that corner are cleared out, it's completely eliminating and destroying one of the gateways into the town that reflect the town. And this isn't, it shouldn't be new to anybody, because we went through this like the other ones. So I'm curious about, and you're telling me that's all, according to this site plan, all those trees are going to go. There's a buffer, but it's not a preserved tree buffer, it's just a distance buffer where replantings will occur.
What we've done along Jones Sausage, and we work with staff on it, is we did look at, is there any trees that we could save as part of the first two buildings? And we haven't done that on this one yet. And what we found, that there wasn't really any existing trees there that would qualify as a good tree worth saving. And so, and staff agreed with our assessment of that. So what we've done all along there is proposed some enhanced landscaping with new trees that are all, you know, symmetrical, don't look like there's just a one or two trees that are out of place that were saved, and then you've got all new landscaping around it. So that would be our intention for that intersection. We could certainly work with staff to see if there's, you know, any major trees in, because there is, you know, quite a bit of green space there that's intended to be planted. And if there's, you know, some trees that staff agrees that, yeah, it'd be nice to save that, we can certainly take a look at that.
I'll pass to another questions, because this is just not at all what addressed any of the concerns that were brought forth on the first go-round. And if you drive over Jones, over Jones Sausage Road toward Garner, that stand of trees on that corner is highly significant to the landscape of the vista coming into the town. Until eliminated, you're going to see horizon. Okay, that's, it's just terribly disappointing.
I just wanted to add something to piggyback off of what Mr. Whitaker just said. I remember the conversation about the trees in that southwest east corner you're talking about, Damian, Mr. Damian Dillinger. And I remember us saying that they were going to preserve those trees as much as they could during the first two buildings, because they were wanting to pretty much clear and grade this lot for this Building 3, but they, because they put the dirt over there. But we told them, like, you know, please don't, you know, grade everything, mass grade, and it was okay to leave the dirt over there at that point in time, but when this, you know, building will come, I don't recall that, you know, being a requirement of saving those trees. And I will also say that they are exceeding the minimum requirements as far as landscaping is concerned. We've had several conversations and several revisions in asking them to add more landscaping in the area, and then along the Calabar and Hay Street, that's area. So they have added a lot of new landscaping to soften, you know, industrial building next to, you know, residential neighborhood. next to, you know, residential neighborhood.
My comment to that is that it's a special use permit, and the minimums are relevant, but they aren't necessarily sufficient for the impact of a project of this size and the scale. I'll also say that landscaping is no replacement for existing tree canopy. And if it is, it wouldn't be for 50 years, and usually it's not. So I'll pass to someone else if someone else has questions, but I'd also want to hear from the rest of the presenters.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dellinger. Your concerns are noted and expressed. Anything else from other council members at this time?
I want to touch on that, if I can. Just, hello? Questions, questions specific to what Mr. Dellinger just talked about, these trees. I believe Calabar, will Calabar be widened on that side? Is Calabar's going to be widened?
On that side, the road itself will not be widened, but a sidewalk will be added.
Okay, so a sidewalk will be added on that side of Calabar, on the south side, correct?
North and south side.
North and south side, okay. So getting to his point, I asked one question, was the roads going to be widened, was it right of way, would you have to take out any trees? His point is a very valid one, because as you come, well, if you come to that intersection, or if you come out of Hay River, I mean, you see trees now. So the proposal is to take all the trees down but add additional plantings, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, for the, like I said, we're willing to work with staff if there's some trees in there that are worth saving. You know, like I said, we evaluated most of them. There was not many trees that were in a good condition, that if you left that one tree standing there by itself, it's not going to thrive. It's not, you know, it's just, it's not going to give the look that we think it's going to look, and it'll, you know, in essence, look out of place with all the brand-new landscaping all around it. But, you know, we're certainly willing to look at that area. If there's some trees in there that are evaluated as trees that could be worth saving, we can certainly take a look at that. But, you know, along that whole corridor, like I said, we've got the parking at 60 feet roughly off of the right-of-way, where it could be 15 feet off the right-of-way. And we did that intentionally to provide that buffer and to provide that green space that you see when you come around the corner there.
Okay, so you're putting an enhanced planting there in the 50, and how much additional planting, I'm assuming it's going in the 50-foot buffer, is that correct?
Well, it's, like I said, it's a 15-foot required street buffer, but we've kept, pulled the parking back to right around 60 feet. I don't recall the exact dimension, but it's, as you can see, it's outside of the 50-foot building setback. So the parking's even farther back than what the building could be under the UDO.
Okay, but how, so the buffer's only going to be 15-foot wide? That's what I'm trying to get around to.
Well, the planting area is 60 feet wide.
The planting area is 60 feet wide? Okay.
Which exceeds the buffer area, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, anything else, Johnson? Okay, thank you. All right, thank you for your presentation. Town, let me see, Mr. Trezenberg, are you still here? But at any rate, that presentation is finished. Are there any other persons here who were sworn to give testimony in regards to this matter? I'll recognize you at this time. Okay, sir, if you will, go to the podium and identify yourself.
My name is Ralph Carson, 404 Hay River Street in Garner, North Carolina, 27529. Thank you, Mayor, and members of council for allowing me to speak this evening on the SUP-SP-21-05, which is the Beacon Commerce Park. I live relatively close to the intersection of Calabar. I live on Hay River Street. And I have been involved with numerous hearings on this development, the previous Lot 1 and 2, and of course, the Amazon preceding that. And I want to thank council for asking some very pointed questions, because that echoes the concerns of our neighborhood as well. And I appreciate you looking into that. I wanted to commend the developer and the design team, because initially, they involved the neighbors of Hunter's Mark and the surrounding area through virtual meetings, through in-person meetings. They were available by email, by telephone. And they have addressed, I think, almost all of the concerns that we have had in their design and some of the redesign work. In doing so, they have created one small issue, and that is an encroachment onto our deeded sign, our entrance sign along Calabar. They have committed to continuing discussions with the residents to mitigate those concerns, and hopefully that will be addressed. In redesigning the, this property, they are going to be bringing Calabar Street, the existing Calabar Street, up to DOT standards. Currently, it's in poor condition just because of the way it was initially built 21 years ago or so. And so we appreciate all the changes they've made. Like I said, there's a couple of things that we still are looking at with them. And one of the other things that we would like council to consider, or town staff, and our HOA and NCDOT, is that one of the last meetings that was held, they were going to try to keep Calabar open during the complete reconstruction, which is going to be a traffic nightmare and probably a safety issue. One of the things that was discussed, instead of trying to do this construction over a couple months, is to perhaps close off Calabar Street, and Hunter's Mark could use the Watkins Valley entrance for a period of perhaps two weeks while they go in and just nail that out and get it done. Two weeks is probably a lot better than two months in having to drive through that construction zone, which is fairly confined as it is now. So in consideration of those few issues, I am in support of this SUP approval, and would kindly request that council also consider approving this SUP with whatever other conditions that they may see fit. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Carson. Appreciate your time, okay? All right, I believe we have heard from every person that had wanted to speak, and certainly from the applicant in our town. So, counsel, unless you have questions of others, I'm going to close the hearing and call for a motion. So, hearing closed. Having heard the presentation on this SUP, it is now ready for a motion. So, counsel, what say you?
I find the application SUP-SP-2105 meets the town's 8 criteria for special use permits as identified in Article 3.9.2. D. Therefore, I move that the council approve SUP-SP-2105 Beacon Commerce Park, Building 3, with the nine site-specific conditions to be listed on the permit that will be prepared by staff.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vance. So, counsel, you have a motion properly before you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made and properly seconded. Ms. Behringer, thank you. Okay, I think this has been fully vetted, but just before we vote, if there's a comment or concern, I'll hear that, and then we'll vote. Anybody?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to take the time, after the motion is made and seconded, to have to revisit some of these issues, particularly around Criteria 5 and 6, and the particular emphasis of those on the natural environment, and adequate screening and buffering. This would be a devastating effect to that entrance way to Garner. Devastating. And you can't replace existing old-growth trees with open space, and it'd be generous, considered generous to what you're offering. Really like, for them to go back to staff and look at what is going to happen there. Again, this is, it shouldn't be a surprise on the emphasis that people have in Garner on the existing tree preservation and the location of it. Tree preservation on the backside of a warehouse is not the intent of the UDO. It's for aesthetic purposes. I would recommend that we withdraw the motion and continue this, so that they can revisit this, this corner. That would be my recommendation.
Okay, you'll comment, yeah, all right. Thank you, sir. Anybody else comment before we vote?
This is a very good point. We don't have any guarantee that anything's going to be saved, or have any condition added on that anything's going to be tried to save. I mean, with the site plan, it just shows the buffer area, the 60-foot planting area, I'm sorry, excuse me, the planting area. So, Mr. Dellinger raises a good point. But there's nothing here that says, well, we're going to go back and bring us back a detailed plan of that particular area that borders Calabar, Calabar Street, excuse me.
Okay, heard a comment here, recommendation. We have a motion properly before us. I'll perhaps deviate. Did you want to make a comment, ma'am?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, there is a landscape plan that has been approved that covers this area. And, you know, Ms. Jones, I don't know if she's still on the line, but she should be able, if she is, she could speak to that, I think. So it's not that there's not going to be any landscaping there. Just wanted to clarify.
Sure, okay, all right.
That needs to be submitted.
Yes, actually, I don't-
Let's hear from Ms. Jones, since the attorney asked her to clarify anything she wants to.
Yes, as attorney said, that there is landscaping going to be there. It's going to have more landscaping than is required. Staff will, if, go out and look at the existing landscaping and, you know, with the developer to determine, you know, if it makes sense to save those trees, as we've done other in buffer inspections. This is not a buffer inspection, technically. This is just, you know, the existing landscaping that's there that wants to be preserved. And in regards to the preservation of landscaping, sometimes landscaping is preserved in the rear or the sides, or even the front buffer. So it's just, in this particular case, the preserved landscaping just so happens to be in the rear of the project area.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Jones. All right, the motion is properly before us. I'm going to call for a vote at this time, so-
I would again ask that the motion be withdrawn. If there's a landscape plan, I'd like for it to be submitted into evidence and to be able to see it and evaluate it. And if, as indicated, there's a, the capacity of staff to go out with the developer and reevaluate this particular area more thoroughly to accommodate the conditions relevant to this SUP, I think we should be prudent and take the time. There's no rush to this. And if there are other options, and they're willing to entertain them, I think we would be-
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
There's a landscape plan within this submitted, so I'm not sure if you didn't get the landscaping plan, but there's a landscape plan, about four or five pages worth of landscaping details for this particular project.
Yes, and I would deserve, that's been testified to here this evening, sure enough. Mr. Matthews, I recognize you.
But we didn't receive it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
That's the difference. We don't have it submitted into evidence for this hearing.
Okay, Mr. Matthews.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to go ahead and call for the question.
That requires a second.
Okay, call for the question. Mr. Attorney, I'm trying to keep my parliamentary procedures in order. If Mr. Dellinger had made an alternate motion or amended the motion, does that have to be voted on first, or since we have the question called for, does that precede that?
My understanding, the calling of the question is on the alternate motion first, and then the original motion, should the alternate motion not pass?
So the alternate motion is by Mr. Dellinger to not formally take action on the initial motion and to vote-
To delay this to the next meeting.
To delay this, yeah, okay.
On February the 22nd.
Okay. So if council votes, as the question is called, on that motion, then that action will not approve the first motion. If this motion fails, then we'll go back to the first motion, I believe, right?
That is my understanding of Robert's rules of order.
Okay, all right. So a question's been called for on the motion made by Mr. Dellinger. If you approve that motion, then you would vote aye. If you don't approve it, then you would vote no. So I'll call for the ayes on the called question at this time.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, okay, all those who are in opposition, no?
No.
No.
Mr. Matthews, you said aye and no.
I got confused on what you said, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, all right, we'll do it, we'll do it again.
You're right.
Yeah.
Not often I can vote twice on the same thing.
Yeah. If you, if you approve the called question on Mr. Dellinger's motion to not take action tonight, but to delay this until another hearing, right? If you approve that, you can vote aye. If you'd rather go ahead and deal with it tonight, you would vote no. So I'll go through the, since there was some confusion. So if you are in favor of the called question motion, would you vote aye?
Aye.
And if you're opposed to that, would you vote no?
No.
Okay, the chair declares that the, that motion is not approved by a vote of 3 to 2. So now we will go back to the formal question, which is a, recommend, excuse me, a motion that the, that the SUP be approved. I believe Mr. Vance made that motion, and it was seconded by Ms. Behringer. So, counsel, if you, if you favor the motion now, that was previously before us to approve this, would you vote aye?
Aye.
Okay, if you're opposed to the motion, would you vote no?
No.
Okay, chair declares that the motion is approved by a vote of 3 to 2, and it is so ordered. I believe, Ms. Attorney, that's all we need for that particular issue, is that right?
That's correct.
I'm sorry?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
No further actions needed.
Okay, okay, thank you, counsel. I respect your differing views and points on this, it's been well-vetted. Thank you, all of those who are here for the presentation. I appreciate your time, and we wish you well, okay? Okay, I'm looking at the clock on the wall, it's past our ordinary recess time, so I'm going to, at this time, counsel, declare a 10-minute recess, give you a chance to take a break, and we will resume back at 9:30 with the rest of our agenda. a break, and we will resume back at 9:30 with the rest of our agenda.
An overview of the study purpose, the schedule and the study tasks. And then a task overview and next steps.
Very good.
So, the purpose of the study will be to assess current conditions in the town's pedestrian network, to develop recommendations to complete the pedestrian travel network which will connect residents to key cultural resources and destinations in the town. It will recommend program policies, develop a plan implementation, and it will garner support for adoption of the plan by town council. So, to your right, you have a snapshot of the schedule and the task to be completed in that timeframe. I realize it's a bit small, but you have this in your agenda packet if you want to do a more in-depth review of that. But the plan is scheduled to be completed within 12 months, and that's from kickoff to plan adoption. This can be, there's four main task components, so the first one will be to document the existing conditions. Second component is the engagement. The third is to develop recommendations, and finally, the implementation plan. So, at the outset of the study, the project team will complete a site visit focusing on locations that are identified by staff and by the steering committee. And through the site visit, the project team will identify weaknesses in the pedestrian network which would include common issues such as maintenance of sidewalks or problematic pedestrian crossings at intersections, things of that nature. And it will also identify opportunities for improving, for better connectivity and, you know, areas where the town has a good pedestrian network and how we can build on that. It will also, the existing conditions portion will also review any relevant plans. So, this study will be building on past transportation plans that have been completed and any studies that are relevant to transportation. It will also include a review of any policies and the ordinance, so basically, any institutional framework that might impact development or construction of pedestrian facilities. And then, once the project team has gathered all of that, they will map the existing network. And as you might recall, I went through an exercise at the end of last year to compile all GIS data that we had on existing sidewalk facilities and sidewalk projects to be completed. Luckily, the consultant will be able to dedicate far more time to build on that inventory that I initially compiled, and they'll be able to expand on it and include more information such as, you know, sidewalk width, pavement conditions, things of that nature, so that it's a much more thorough inventory, as well as, you know, removing portions that possibly were completed but weren't documented. So, the engagement component will be a, will be a critical to the plan. The, so the engagement will be, will include the steering committee and the community at large, and we will be looking to them to help establish goals at the outset of the study, which, and to guide plan development and to inform the recommendations that come out of the pedestrian plan. And the steering committee will be made up of staff, residents, town officials, and committees such as the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, Senior Advisory Committee. The aim is to have a broad representation from various cross-sections of the community so that they can provide, you know, local knowledge and help the consultant and the project team throughout the, throughout the study. There will be four meetings with the steering committee throughout the plan development. And, and so, part of the hope is that the steering committee will help to champion the plan and, you know, to spread awareness of the plan throughout the community within the groups that they represent. In terms of community input and getting feedback from residents at large, at the beginning of the study, there will be a, an online survey, and that will help to educate and make the public aware of the plan and its purpose, and it will also seek to gather feedback on the priorities that Garner residents have for the plan. So, for example, you know, which, which destinations in town should be prioritized, or, you know, what sort of weaknesses do they, do they encounter in the pedestrian network in the town, things of that nature to help to get the, the study going. And then, there will be two public input sessions. One will be after the initial recommendations are developed, and then the second one will be after the draft report is ready so that they can provide feedback and, you know, let us know if, what came out of the draft report kind of jives with, with the, the goals and the priorities that they have identified. Then, the, the plan will provide recommendations. There will be recommendations for facility and intersection improvements, so this can be sidewalk segments or just specifically intersection, like crossings. And this will be, this will be included in the sidewalk GIS files, which will be passed off to staff so that we can use that as a, use that as a resource going forward and, and maintain that. So, that will have a list of projects that are necessary to complete the pedestrian network in the town. In terms of design guidelines, we will, that will provide any recommended updates that might be necessary to town design standards, so typical facility cross-sections, which, you know, developers reference as development comes in, or as we have any roadway projects in the town, we want to make sure that whatever guidelines are being used provide the most up-to-date, most up-to-date design standards that, that we would want for pedestrians. In terms of policy recommendations, anything that will help to facilitate the implementation of the recommendations that are identified and to ensure that, that the, that the policies that the town has in place are aligned with NC DOT's Complete Streets Policy. Finally, the action plan. The plan, the pedestrian plan will have a list of prioritized projects that will, that are to be completed within a roughly 15-year timeframe. This just helps to prioritize the projects from short to medium to long-term based on the prioritization criteria that is developed early on in the study. And within those prioritized projects, there will be about six to 10 priority projects. And for these projects, there will be more detailed designs and more detailed cost estimates. And I just wanted to point out that this, we, we could use this to help identify projects to complete with, with the bond funds. So, that's just one thing to keep in mind. And in terms of next steps, we are just asking that town council recommend one to two representatives from the town council to serve on the steering committee. It could be, as long as we have one, it could be as many as two. But that, that was a quick overview of, you know, what we hope to accomplish through the plan, what, what the end products will be, and we will be kicking off with the first steering committee meeting next month, so town council can, if you want to discuss amongst each other and get back to staff later on which town council member would like to sit on the steering committee.
Okay.
I'll volunteer. I second that.
Well, okay, let's get to that in just a minute. Yeah, that's fine. You may have said upfront, but we, we've engaged the services of McAdams.
Yes.
Consultant that's going to guide us through this process, is that right? Okay. And so, yeah, the action, receive this as information and consider recommending town council representative for steering committee. And so, Mr. Singleton has offered up himself as a volunteer. One council member perhaps would be sufficient, or you anticipated there would be more than one? Yes, John?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add, if it's okay with Gabby, just to sort of give you an overview of how we're thinking about using the seats we have on the steering committee. So, we had hoped to have a couple, two council members on that. Also, sort of five slots that represent the citizens of the community, one being from the DGA board that overlaps with a goal of connectivity in North Garner that they've had for a couple of years now. Parks and Rec Advisory Board, Planning Commission member, and then we were going to propose two at-large citizen members, possibly two that may represent some of our less connected communities like maybe Greenbrier and maybe the school acres Cloverdale, North Garner area in addition to a DGA board member. So, we were going to propose at least five citizen seats that way, two council seats. There's a number of staff that we think would need to be involved, including a planning staff member, police, public works, and engineering. And then, there's some partner agencies that we need to have on that committee, NC DOT representative, someone from our MPO, and then we'd also like to invite someone from the Safe Routes to School program. We've recently completed some work with them through another, another endeavor, and we think it would be very timely to include them in that. So, that is, that is how staff was going to propose that we take the 15 seats that we had, and that would include two council members unless council would rather us use one of those seats in some other way.
Okay, thank you, John. Yeah, and I was going to ask you, so I understand the proposals to have about 15 members of the steering committee, is that what I heard?
That's our cap.
Okay, yeah.
That's the suggested cap on the number.
Yeah.
And we feel like that by using all those, it gives us a pretty good cross-section of, of staff, citizen, and elected officials.
Sure. Just a logistical question, I guess what it would be, does, this steering committee anticipates its meetings would be, I guess, in the evening, is that right, or early evening, as opposed to daytime meetings, or do you, do you know?
That, that hasn't been determined yet. I guess that, that we're compiling the list of steering committee members now, and we could do a poll of what times work better for, for everybody. It might be that that's, that that's in the evening. That might be more convenient for, for people.
Okay, yeah, well, yeah. So, I mean, even some of the committee members, if they're, if they're working on a regular basis, daytime, I would assume evening meetings might work in their schedules better, but that's to be determined, okay. So, council, you've heard, and, and the makeup, as you've mentioned it, John, makes sense to me. I served on a steering committee, I'm trying to remember what it was, a number of years ago. Maybe had something to do with transportation, but, so, Mr. Singleton has offered up, and, and that's what I was going to do, is see if the council members, if we have more than one, want to volunteer for this service. Are there others on the council who would like to participate in this?
I'd volunteer, Mr. Mayor. I'd have the time.
Excuse me, yeah, Mr. Singleton and Mr. Matthews. Okay, council, will you give a thumbs up if you formally approve that? I assume you guys would vote for you. Yeah, okay. So, it sounds like, yeah.
Can we do questions? I have one question.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, go ahead, yeah. Sorry, yeah.
So, looking through the plan, it looks good. When in Section 32, the pedestrian network and corridor analysis, and this is something to put on the radar. Is there a lot of informal pedestrian routes in Garner, particularly with older neighborhoods that don't have sidewalks? So, make sure the consultant's aware of that, older parts of neighborhood town that have those types of neighborhoods. The other piece is, and this is probably a policy issue, a UDO thing, Jeff's probably going to look at me and go, oh, no. But I think we need to also address, when you're talking about pedestrians and pedestrian safety, is the connectivity requirements we have when we're connecting new neighborhoods to older neighborhoods. This has come up multiple times on council where somebody's trying to connect a new neighborhood to a neighborhood that doesn't have sidewalks and there are roads. And so, it's a safety issue. So, I don't know, maybe there's a change where there's a change in the requirement for connectivity if you're connecting to an older neighborhood, but that's something that comes up over and over again, and it's, it ends up being a real safety issue, and people get pretty concerned about that. So, yeah, the informal sort of pedestrian thing, and then the other potential policy-related issue to connectivity, so those are the things.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other comments from council? Need anything else from us, Ms. Lawler? I think we have two council members at this point that we would ask them to serve along with the other steering committee members.
All I needed for tonight? Yep. And if you have any questions, we'll provide more, more updates as we get further along in the study.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else from council? Okay, I think we're good. Thank you for your patience again, waiting for us.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we are now on Item J, committee reports, and I believe we have, we'll hear from the HR committee.
Thank you very much. I just want to say, for the past couple of council meetings, we have been mentioning, Councilman Dellinger and I, that there's an opening on the Planning Commission because one member is moving out of the state, and that we will be looking to fill that position, and we have filled that position. And that position will be filled by Mr. Ralph Carson. He's in the audience tonight. Mr. Carson is a longtime Garner resident, been here for over 20 years, very active in the community, very involved. He has engineering and, engineering and a project management background. We believe that he'll be a very strong asset to bring aboard with his technical expertise to the Planning Commission, and he will be fulfilling the remaining time that, that the individual who left will have served, and that's a little over a year and a half before we'd be looking at, looking at other, well, looking at how we're going to move forward with the other positions. But I'd like to bring before you tonight the recommendation that Mr. Ralph Carson be approved to fill the vacant position that's currently on the Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vance, and I think by policy or otherwise, the council usually votes on the recommendations coming from HR. So, at this time, I'm supposing you make that in the form of a motion?
Yes.
Okay. And is there a second to the motion? All right, council, any questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Just a brief comment. This is a very important commission. I think you picked a great person to be on here, and I think it's kind of the caliber of people we need on this with the growth we've got going forward, has that background, that can look through our UDOs and things of this nature, and really have a good understanding what it's all about. So, because we depend on that Planning Commission's recommendation to come back to us, and I think you'll, you'll be a strong asset on there, so you guys picked out a good one, I think.
Okay. Any other comments? Hearing none. If you favor the motion to the HR committee to have Mr. Carson serve his term on the committee, would you vote aye?
Aye.
If you're opposed, would you vote no? Okay. It is approved, the motion from HR, and thank you for your work. You've been busy for some time. You're still meeting with, trying to remember what cycle you're on, but...
About to pick up again, so.
Okay, yeah, I was thinking so, yeah. All right, are there any other committee reports? That's the only one I've been made aware of.
I can give you one, Mr. Mayor, as far as the veterans, and I think it'd fall under this.
Yeah.
We had a meeting Monday, and of course, we've got the wall that heals is coming, and it's a good group of volunteers, both military, retired, and citizen involvement, everything from the women's, women's club to right on the gambit there. And a lot of things are coming together, and we're getting out to the crunch time. We're really starting to tighten things up, so it's going to be a great event. I just happened to bring one of the brochures. We've got quite a few of these, and we can get more of them, so anybody that needs them, we're trying to get them out, the larger ones to the businesses. And so, it's going to be a great event, and, yeah, for Vietnam veterans, it's quite an important thing. And so, my heart's in this one. So, I can get all these we want, but I just want to let the board and everybody listening to us and watching us tonight know this is going to be a very big event, and you can go online and find out more about it. But it's going to be March 31st through April 3rd, the wall that heals. It's going to be the three-quarter scale size, it's going to be bigger than the last one we had, so it's going to be a great event. And if anybody has any questions, let me know, I'd be glad to help you, but we'll have a lot of information and brochures.
And I believe, I think I heard Mr. Stevens at our road meeting the other morning, there is a, like a website or a...
Yes, there is, and all that's inside the brochure here, and we can turn this over to our folks here at town, they can go ahead and post it up there.
Yeah, I was thinking there's something as simple as GarnerWall.com.
Yeah, I was trying to, we hit it today, and I was looking for it here, but, ba-da-ba-da-dah.
It's okay, yeah.
But anyhow, we'll get it to our folks here so we can have it online here, if that'd be okay. And I appreciate it, thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, to go to Mr. Matthews' point, there's also a call, a significant call for volunteers as well that's been put out, because there are volunteers that are out there 24 hours a day, because sometimes people like to go out there late privately, but they still would like to have volunteers out there for them. So, that's on the website as well.
Absolutely.
And this is a required orientation as well, so.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, thank you very much.
And there will be a big parade that, on that day, so we've got a lot coming, so we'll tell you more about it as we get there. Thanks, sir.
All right, thank you. All right. I think that's all the committee reports. I'll go to manager reports at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Town council have the Garner info in your packet, about three or four items in there. We, a couple we need to check on and check on the progress of those. Hopefully, they're moving forward. Have your building and permit activity report, and then the other thing is the council, we continue to plan for that. The plan is to have that here at town hall in the training room. That will give us the best opportunity to use any electronic or technology we need. We are still waiting on a couple of guests to confirm, looking at having some folks from Wake County to give us some information on housing, affordable housing, and then also someone from the building development community to talk from that standpoint. And just likely going to have, you know, staff do some introductory reports, kind of set the stage on a couple of these topics, growth topics, and then have some open dialogue from council, and try to get some consensus on where we go from there. And so, that'll be next week on the 17th and 18th. And then, the last item is Public Works will be holding an electronics recycling event at, on the campus of Public Works on February 19th from 8:00 to 1:00 o'clock, and that's basically, because we do not pick up electronics curbside, so this is an annual event where you can get rid of TVs and computers and things like that. It is not meant for appliances, so it's not really meant for, you know, white goods such as washer dryers or refrigerators and microwaves and things like that. This is primarily for electronics, like, like I said, computers, TVs, probably printers and those type of things, but you can go online and maybe get a better, a better list of the things that are acceptable.
I'm glad you said printers. I've got one sitting on a shelf in my garage waiting to hear when this was going to occur so I could get it to the right place.
And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much. So, that was the, let's see, I wrote down the date of that, was the 19th?
February 19th.
February 19th, yeah, okay. Thank you, sir. All right, we will now hear from council members on any reports. Let's see, I'll start with Mr. Vance on this end down here.
I do not have anything to say tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thanks, sir. Mr. Dellinger.
I just want the question about the ARP funds, is that going to sort of come out of our retreat discussion? Is that going to be a part of our retreat discussion?
It had not planned to be one of the main topics of the retreat. It might be some things, there may be some things that come out of the retreat discussion that, you know, relate to the ARP funding, but we'll likely have a separate session to talk about just the ARP.
All right, because I just want to make, I know the final stuff, the final recommendation, the guidance has come out, so I want to make sure that we're, stay on top of that, and...
Oh, yeah, yeah, yep. The biggest thing that came out was the, being able, being allowed to use up to 10 million without having the, the full revenue replacement criteria that they were talking about before. So, we still have, I mean, the list we gave you, we think is still a relevant list, so now we got to start narrowing down what we're going to do with that, and how we're going to propose to use those funds and meet the criteria.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Ms. Behringer.
Yes, I've noticed the last few days that Quiddog Road from where they're clearing the property up on the corner at 70, down to about two-thirds of the way down to Timber Drive, is a lot of trash along there, more, a lot more than usual, if we could get that picked up.
Okay, was that it? Okay, Mr. Singleton.
For those out there who may be watching, we passed tonight ordinance amending the town code relating to animals and fowl. I want to thank Attorney Jones, Police Department, Animal Control for all their work. A lot of this was making adjustments, improvements to the ordinance after the tragic event that happened here last year with the young lady losing her life to serious injuries to her mom. So, this was mentioned, it's all on TV today, that we'd be voting on this and let people know that it passed. It was in our agenda, and I appreciate all the time y'all put into making these changes. We hope that no one ever has to deal, go through that again. But anyway, just want to let the public know that there have been updates made, and if a tragedy, a tragedy like this happens again, the town is hopefully prepared to deal with it, but I just hope it never happens again. But again, thanks, I feel all the time and effort y'all put into it. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Sinklin. Well, well stated, and thank you, Ms. Attorney, as well. Mr. Matthews?
Just one thing, Mr. Mayor, our meeting day, I was approached by a couple of folks, and there's quite a nice sore on Van Dore Springs Road right across from the school. A couple of houses look like junkyards, I think we all know where they're at over there. What can we do to clean that up? It's got to be a health issue, there's, there's no telling what. I think y'all know the addresses of them over there, right across from the school on the right, they're going out.
We'll have our staff check on them and see if there's anything that is out of their compliance.
Okay, that'd be most appreciated. I told them I'd bring it up tonight, and, and once you see it, you know what we're talking about. That's all I got, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And the mayor will just, let's see, did I cover everybody? Yeah, the mayor will just mention that, I think all of you heard, that our Groundhog Day, our Groundhog did make an appearance. He was slightly under the weather, they said he had a little bit of an ear infection, so they didn't let him get as close to me as possible. But at any rate, as you know, you keep your winter coats out, we're going to have six more weeks of winter weather, according to Mr. Snurd, so he's been a pretty accurate prognosticator.
He didn't bite your ear?
He did not, no, so, but well attended, and Mr. Vance made it out there before we were finished. It's a good, good thing. I, I've got to get with the town manager. I received a very nice letter of appreciation from a gentleman who came to my office, and we chatted. It has to do with some workers who are at the Public Works, and I meant to bring it with me this evening, but I'll get that and get it to you and get it to Mr. Jones, but he took some time to come in. Some folks who do some very good, diligent work over there. All right, that's, I believe, all I have. We, we have a closed session that is the last item on the agenda that I have, so I believe this is a closed session pursuant to real estate acquisition, general statutes, Section 143, Point 318, Point 11A5, I think I got that right. So, somebody...
I moved.
Moved, yeah, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded that the council go into closed session this time. All those in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposition, no, and it's approved. Thank you, Mr. Carson, appreciate your time. All right, I declare then that by acclamation, or excuse me, by unanimous vote of the council, we are now in closed session, and I believe we can just stay in this area. Is that... Is that the plan?
Mr. Mayor, whenever you're ready.
Okay. Okay, the mayor will declare that the council is back in regular session, open session. The council went into closed session to discuss possible real estate acquisition and gave staff some instruction regarding to that as a matter of that will come back to us at a future date. Just before I ask for a motion adjourned, again, I want to recognize Ms. Miller, who's sat with us through the whole meeting tonight. We appreciate that. And again, we welcome you to our town and look forward to, to a long and a very prosperous relationship for us all. So thank you again very much. So with that, Council, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn. Moved and I heard a second from...
Second.
Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
And there's no opposition?